Okay, it is 9:32. Good morning. I'm calling this meeting the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask our clerk to please call the roll to establish a quorum and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And Hume?
Here.
Thank you. And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 29th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form into the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make their comment. To make a comment by phone, dial (916) 875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda or off-agenda item. Clerk Staff will transfer each caller into the meeting. You may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at (916) 874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Frost, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose rule the liberty of justice, law, and
Okay, good morning and welcome. So, we will start the meeting with off-agenda public comments. What we've done, for those of you who have not been here, we start with our off-agenda public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and this is just as it sounds, it's for items that are not otherwise on the timed agenda items for the day. And what we're trying to do is to remain on schedule. We do off-agenda public comments for the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and if it goes beyond that 30 minutes, we hold it and continue the off-agenda public comments for the afternoon at the end of the time matters. So I'll turn now to our clerk. Do we have off-agenda public comment?
We do have off-agenda public comments. We have about 20 minutes for in-person signed up at the moment, and then we have about five on call in the queue.
Okay, so let's start with in-person, and after a few minutes, I'll leave the queue open, flow for another five, 10 minutes or so, and then I'll have you close the queue.
Okay, thank you. Our first in-person speaker is Ryan Harris.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Got an overhead as long as I'm not doing too much.
No, no, you're fine.
Sure.
Yeah.
Ryan?
I know Gavin's in town, so hopefully he's listening, he could understand. This was one of the last meetings. Reason I ask that, you said I'm doing too much. You'll hear it here on the audio. You forgot to mute your mic. Did you hear it? You hear it? Okay, now he's doing too much. That's what you said. People could go home and watch it, though, because it's recorded.
Can you please take your way to the podium?
I am. I'm trying to listen for where you told me I couldn't pass out those flyers in the first meeting. Since Pat Hume, who's on his phone, maybe that's why he didn't notice it, because he don't pay attention. He didn't catch the fact that you never told me I could, and you'll see in the next meeting, when he opens his mouth and says, "No, you weren't." Just why I ask if Gavin, you know, you're in town, I hope you watch and see what you allow to happen in your own town before you want to help out others. So I never heard you say I couldn't pass out those flyers on the 22nd. Never heard you say that.
Not handing them out to the crowd, hand them out to the clerk.
But, on the 12th?
You're not doing it.
Oh.
Hand them out to the clerk.
Listen to Hume.
No, you weren't.
No, I wasn't.
No. No, you weren't.
No, I wasn't. When did he say that, Mr. Hume, who's still on his phone? Okay, exactly. You don't pay attention, yet you want to comment on what's going on. No, it's not, so shut up.
Okay, you have two minutes left. Thank you, thank you, Ryan.
Okay, our next speaker is Pastor John Johnson.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Pastor John Johnson of the New Life Christopher Church in District 2, and I just want to let you know that I'm here to just speak on behalf of consideration that you have on behalf of those healthcare workers that are working in our area. We have a low-income impoverished area, and I'm also, you know, a constituent of the area, not only the pastor, I know the area pretty well because I, day-to-day, greet our community as well as those that's in our community. And we're just asking you to consider the healthcare situation in our area and as far as the workers and the wages that's needed for them to improve the environment in the area. And I know if you do this, we will make it better for us and make it better for me as a pastor, because I have been trying my best to encourage them to work in the healthcare industry, to work in the industry that they can make a decent wage and live and still stay in the area to live. And I know we're in the area now where we're trying to hire and we're trying to do our best to make it easy for those that want to work in our environment, in our community, but we can only do that if we consider and help one another. My motto's always, "Reach one, teach one, expect greater." Thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you.
Next is Sharon.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for lowering. My name is Sharon Duchessee. I'm a home care provider, been a home care provider since 2009. We're currently in bargaining. I'm privileged enough to be part of the bargaining team. I was very disappointed with the way bargaining went last session. Offering us just a dollar and getting rid of our healthcare is not acceptable. The way it was put to us is if we get rid of healthcare, those that are on our healthcare now, could just do Medi-Cal. That's not feasible, because if they, they're not going to qualify for Medi-Cal. It's going to end up costing them more money to get the money that they would receive in the race. It's not right. I'm here because I want to protect our members. I'm here to protect our providers. I'm here to protect our recipients. Two million hours last year went unused in Sacramento County alone. That's not right. The reason those hours went unused is because there's not enough providers. The reason we don't have enough providers, wage isn't there. My nephew works at Raising Cane's. He makes almost double what I make. He gets full medical. He gets full dental. He gets full vision. He has a 401K. He has a chance to get scholarship money, and they'll help pay for his college. He also has a chance to get a percentage in the profits for his store that he works at. I'm not asking for that much. I'm asking that we have a livable wage on something that we really need. I've told you guys before, for me, I don't want to have to save up for a cucumber. And that's a thing, and it's a sad thing that I have to do. I can't afford to buy one cucumber every week because it's out of my budget.
Please wrap up your comments.
I can't afford to have fresh fruits and vegetables. I'm asking for a livable wage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Good morning, Board. Good morning, everybody here. So for the past nine months, nine months, we've been out here pretty much saying the same thing every time we come in. I'm not sure how resonating it speaks to your souls to support the caregivers. I know it does, but it's y'all trying to find the wherewithal for us to get this, but there's, I know the creativity inside your minds, you can do this. We're finding millions of dollars to incarcerate people, like millions of dollars for all these other programs, but to fight living wages. Right now, on the side of history, y'all are a part of something to help keep our poverty rates, like at livable wages, so we can raise this, so we can stop, like, living, like, we spent the night right in front of y'all, like, in tents, and then right below us was people that live there on a regular basis. Some of us have, like, thanks to the union, like, we had some food extras, so a lot of us were just walking around, just giving some of the food to the homeless people out there. I mean, it meant something to them, like, how many of y'all had sleepless nights to where you're going to figure out how you're going to pay for your bills, how you're going to pay for your children, where are you going to send them off to school or college? That's a, that's a daily reality that we live in. I mean, most of, like, I'm here by choice as a caregiver. I'm taking care of my friends, but a lot of us don't have choices. They're taking care of their mothers, they're taking care of their sisters, brothers, cousins, their spouses. I mean, they're in a space that they do not have that choice. Y'all have this choice to match the funds from the federal government. Y'all have the choice to match the funds so we don't have to take away our healthcare. This is, this is your opportunity to speak to the elders that are going to be voting for you next election and say, "I stand with the elderly community. I stand with the disabled community. I stand with the workers that are going to take care of them," because all of us are going to be in this seat one day, and every day that you vote no for us is a day we got to vote no for you. Like, y'all should have, y'all should be out there with us figuring out inventive, creative ways of how to make social change. All the people that get gunned down in the streets, all the people that are fighting, people running away from being raped.
Please wrap up your comments, Stephen.
Like, hiding in the toilets outside, like, that's the reality that they live in. I hope y'all can feel and touch, taste that reality one day. Y'all should sleep out there and see how hard it is for these homeless folks, too.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Stephen.
Cabrina?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I live in Sacramento County, and I'm a provider for healthcare, and I think it's a shame that you just want to give a dollar. That's really sad, because, I mean, we deserve more than that. We do work hard. We are good, you know, take care of people that need to be taken care of. If it wasn't for us, you guys would be paying more money for them to be in homes or somewhere else, and you're going to be, all need caregiving someday, you know? Hopefully, someone's going to care about you, like, we care. I care about who I take care of, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you.
How about Clerk? Hello. Do we have additional public commenters in person?
Good morning. Excuse me, can I have, can I have the same respect that I'm giving you at least?
Yeah, no, I haven't started your time yet. I just have a question for the clerk.
Okay, go ahead.
Any additional public commenters in the queue?
No, right now, we have four who are left, and then I have seven on the phone.
Okay, well, let's close the queue for, for public comment, for off-agenda.
All right, we will close the queue.
Okay, sorry, sorry, Erin.
Okay, I would just like the same respect I'm giving you guys and pay attention to me not get on the phone. I am a care provider. I take care of my husband, he's dying of cancer. I spend the night out there because, you know what? If you don't give us $2, that's where I'm going to be. My husband's going to pass away. I'm not going to have the money for rent. You guys don't give us not even a chance, but $2, that's all we asking, but if you could give us more. It's terrible living in the street. I went there last night, and I don't want to be there when something happens, and it's, that's what's going to happen. If you guys don't give us the $2, or give us a better raise and a medical. Everybody, you know, one day, you're going to be sick, you're going to have provider, they're not going to make it because no gas, or they're homeless. Think about it. You guys are in the age you're getting there, so you guys are going to need somebody to take care of. Life got a funny way of turning things around. You think about that every day, because that's what happened to me. Understand this, that's all we asking, humbly asking you guys to give us a better raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
Good morning.
I wish it was a good morning. I'm here because it's not a good morning. My name's Kim Yvonne. I'm the Executive Vice President with SEIU 2015, and I'm here to send a message on behalf of 30,000 home care providers in Sacramento, mostly women and people of color. Shame on you for allowing 2 million care hours to go unserved and further jeopardizing the right of seniors and people with disabilities to exercise their choice to get home care because we can't keep or attract people to poverty-wage work in this county. Shame on you for proposing that providers choose between hanging on to healthcare or getting a couple of nickels to their pay that's already too low, when you know there's 1,100 people on a waiting list to get healthcare for themselves and their family. Shame on you for exacerbating the housing insecurities that they live with every day, the healthcare crisis that roosts in their homes every minute, and the growing poverty by expecting that 6% increase over three years, that's 1,750 an hour, is enough. But not enough for you, when you expedited your own 36% increase to your wages. Shame on you. And shame on you for advancing your self-interest as a priority over the very people you swore in oath to serve in this county. It is a privilege that you sit in those seats. You have forgot the privilege bestowed upon you by the very people who labor every day to care for the thousands of people that live in this county. It is time you get to work. 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 Get to work.
Okay, please, we have some additional public commenters. Thank you.
Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Debbie's waiting one minute.
Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Let's wait another, just a minute here. Thank you. We're just waiting a moment, as some folks are leaving the chamber, just give them a chance. How many on the phone?
We have six.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Debbie.
Good morning, Board. Sorry, I have a little scratchy throat. Hi, I'm Debbie Woolley. I'm the local government county liaison coordinator, and our group had a board meeting last month, and we talked about what we've been accomplishing for the past nine months and listening. We're feeling like we are developing a liaison relationship with the Board, where we're trying to understand how you operate and all the big decisions that you have to make. We've been looking at the budget for 2024. We're aware that it's $8.8 billion. We're also aware that it's 6.6 of actual monies coming in of that 800 million, it looks like it's coming in from taxpayer money, so that our question is, where is the rest of the 85% money coming from? So, I have a request. On today's agenda, on the consent calendar, we have $19.4 million in the 42 items. I would like the agenda to reflect whether it's in the budget for 2024 or if it's additional to the budget, and also by line item, and I would also request, secondly, that the clerk add the funding source code for these monies that are on the agenda, so that we can track where these monies are going in the budget, so we can be a team member with you and know. I'm well aware that the money's coming from somewhere, but where it's coming from, we would like more clarity on that. So, thank you, Board, and thank you for your attention to our, our little project. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Charles?
Morning, Charles.
Good morning. Want to start off by saying, I'm here almost every week. Sometimes it looks like I'm listening to stuff. It's usually your Sacramento Steps Forward webinars, which are actually one of the really good things Sacramento Steps Forward does. They're really informative, and they spread a lot of information out to the community about what's going on with homelessness and how to help homeless people and how organizations can better help homeless people. So that is one of the really great things, services the county provides, is these webinars by Sacramento Steps Forward. The next thing I wanted to speak about was DA Ho's press conference last week. He mentioned the group that is making an effort to bring the San Antonio Haven for Hope Model to Sacramento. That is Hope for Sacramento. We've been working on that, and we have meetings with him on occasion about some of this stuff, and definitely his DA's office, certain things that they could be doing in the community. Lastly, if, if I can speak, can I speak to one of you guys directly? Is that allowed, really quick? Supervisor Kennedy, if you can, follow up with me about what we talked about a couple weeks ago. I'm diving really deep in specific grants and federal funding for specific locations and types of locations and where they're at and what the buildings used to be. So that's, it's, you know, sifting through tens of thousands of pages, so if I can narrow that down, that'd be really helpful. So call me back if you can, and thank you, guys.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, I now asked James to transfer the callers. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Hello. On August 25th, Sacramento County received a letter from civil rights attorneys demanding that the county transfer people who require acute or extensive mental health care to community health care settings outside the jail facilities to receive the care they need. This comes three years after the Mays v. Sacramento County class action lawsuit was settled in federal court. The letter states, "As class counsel in the Mays v. Sacramento litigation, we write to express our great concern about the county's failure to develop a timely plan, timely plan, to meet the acute mental health needs of people in the Sacramento County jails. For the reasons set forth below, we demand that the county set forth a plan within 30 days, not whenever you feel like, 30 days, to transfer people who require acute or intensive mental health care to community health care settings outside the jail facilities to receive the care they need. As you know, the county has failed for years to provide timely, again, not when you feel like, timely access to acute mental health care for patients in the Sacramento County jails. The system is plagued by chronic delays in access to care, particularly for people experiencing an acute crisis. At any given time, there is a lengthy waitlist of people who meet the criteria for acute mental health treatment. As of today, mental health staff have determined that 31 people living in the jails need acute mental health care but are prevented from receiving that care due to inadequate capacity. Some of those patients have been waiting for more than two weeks to receive the inpatient care date required. These chronic backlogs result in delays throughout the jail mental health care system."
Thank you.
At present.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
The letter from Mays plaintiff's counsel continues. Sacramento County has been and remains in direct violation of the Mays consent decree, which requires the county to provide timely access to inpatient mental health care to patients in the jails. See Mays remedial plan. The provision of clinically indicated treatment to any patient requiring inpatient level of care shall be initiated within 24 hours. In a forthcoming report, the Mays court-appointed expert in suicide prevention found that none of the patients identified as needing inpatient psychiatric care are placed in appropriate acute mental health care beds within 24 hours of identification. As the county is aware, the acute mental health care unit in the main jail, the 2P unit, is woefully inadequate to meet the needs of the people incarcerated in the jails. It lacks space for clinically appropriate group therapy or confidential individual treatment, and was described by the court-appointed mental health expert as more reflective of a solitary confinement unit than an inpatient treatment. The parties have an unresolved legal dispute regarding the county's failure to provide adequate and appropriate access to acute mental health care to people who are incarcerated in the jails. Well over a year ago, the parties entered into a memorandum of understanding acknowledging that continued use of the main jail 2P unit as the acute psychiatric unit makes impossible provision of acute level of care in an adequate therapeutic milieu with appropriate treatment spaced consistent with the relevant consent decree requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm Alan Ash. I'm representing the Sacramento area chapter of ACLU, and I'm a constituent of Chair Desmond in District 3. The Mays plaintiff's counsel letter continues, saying, "The MOU provides the county will examine all possible methods to deliver acute psychiatric care to Mays class members, including in community facilities. Under the terms of the MOU, class counsel expressly reserve the right to pursue enforcement proceedings before the federal court, should the county fail to present an adequate plan for timely remediating the violation. The county initially reported that it intended to expand access to acute mental health care by renovating the main jail to relocate and expand the acute mental health care unit. In May of this year, we wrote to express concerns about delays in the implementation of that plan. Earlier this month, we were informed that the project had been removed from the Board's September calendar with no plan to revisit the item. At present, the county has presented no plan for addressing the dangerously inadequate mental health resources in the jail, except for an inadequate response letter. In the meantime, Mays class members continue to experience preventable, and in many cases permanent, harm due to the county's failure to provide adequate mental health care. The county's failure to address the longstanding problem is dangerous and inhumane. It violates the Mays remedial plan in the party's May 2022 memorandum of understanding." Thank you, and next commenter will continue.
Okay, please transfer the last caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you. Good morning. This is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in independent practice. I'm president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association. I'm chairperson of the Sacramento County Mental Health Board, a business owner in District 3, and a resident of District 2. I'm making these comments this morning as a lifelong Sacramento resident and a community mental health advocate. And yep, I'm calling in regards to the Mays plaintiff counsel letter dated August 25th that is demanding that Sacramento County get the people with serious mental health needs out of the jail and into community care. I'm also calling in regards to Sacramento County's Office of the County Council response in a letter dated September 22nd, 2023, that the county, quote, "cannot say that a location and service provider has been chosen at this time. However, the county is committed to placing a portion of the jail population with acute mental health needs in a treatment facility outside of the jails and is diligently working to locate the best facility," end quote. Who is making the determination of what the best facility is for individuals experiencing acute mental issues? It appears that the sheriff and the attorneys representing the interests of this board of supervisors are the ones making a healthcare determination, one that you're not trained or equipped to do. It appears that this determination is being left up to what makes the sheriff feel comfortable, letting go of incarcerated people versus meeting the healthcare needs of these individuals, which is placing this county at further risk of medical neglect. You're kicking the can down the road. Meanwhile, some of our county's most vulnerable, most disenfranchised, and most oppressed individuals are being traumatized by the conditions and the custodians inside the jail. Not to mention, black people make up roughly 39% of Sacramento's jail population and are by far the most overrepresented group in our jail system. 82% of individuals currently detained in Sacramento County jails have a diagnosis of a serious mental illness and are being held pre-trial. In other words, individuals in need of acute mental health treatment are jailed.
Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco, could you please end your comments? You're past your time.
While they await trial and they're still legally innocent.
Thank you for your call. Okay, that concludes your comments. There's some chatter that there were a couple of people who got cut off on cue, but I went on record at the time that the phone queue was closed and I can't verify that that actually happened and staff can't verify that either.
Are there just two callers?
They're saying two callers.
Are they on the phone right now?
They're not on the phone yet.
If they call back in, we'll take them, the two callers, that's fine.
Okay.
We can just squeeze them in. But until then, we'll move on to our consent calendar.
Yeah, I have a couple of notes for your consent items. You do have consent items 2 through 42. You also have an addendum agenda. And so on your addendum agenda, this was to add a closed session case. This is the Hardesty Schneider versus County. So there's no action that you need to take on the addendum agenda that will be a closed session matter. So for the notes that I have for your regular agenda, consent matters 2 through 42, I do have a request for item 22 to continue this to October 17th. This is the retroactive approval for Y rate salary for one county employee upon the appointment to class of deputy sheriff recruit on September 10th.
Okay, I'll move to continue.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. So we will continue that to October 17th.
Okay, so on the remaining consent items, any comments or questions from supervisors? Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just like the record to show that I'm abstaining on items 2 and 12.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Serna. Any other comments on the other items? Nope.
Second.
Okay, motion. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
We do. Hang on, there's someone for item agenda 2, and that's all that we have for now, so I'm going to close the phone queue. If someone could transfer the caller, please. There may be two folks in that queue. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Yes, I was connected from the off agenda comment earlier. The letter, a letter from Mays plaintiff's counsel continues saying that having failed to present a plan to ensure access to acute levels of mental health care to people in psychiatric crisis, the county must now, within 30 days of the date of this letter, produce a plan to provide these, those treatment resources.
Hold on, hold on one second, caller. We're going to let you keep your time, but just for the record, just to be clear, this is one of the off agenda callers, correct?
It's one of the off agenda callers and there may be one more caller.
Go ahead, okay, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm going to start your time.
Thank you. So having failed to present a plan to ensure access to acute levels of mental health care to people in psychiatric crisis, the county must now, within 30 days of the date of the letter, produce a plan to provide these treatment resources in the community. This measure was expressly contemplated in the party's MOU and was endorsed by the court-appointed mental health care expert in an April 2023 report filed with the Mays court. Until, see Jocket 166-1 at 15, until adequate psychiatric inpatient treatment can be provided in the jail, it is incumbent upon the defendant to seek out psychiatric treatment in the community, whether through county, mental health, or private providers where patients can be placed. Many of the patient population requiring acute care cycle between the community and jail placement. These patients are no greater a threat in general than psychiatric patients placed in many community facilities. The county may elect to reopen mental health treatment beds at the Sacramento Mental Health Treatment Center. Again, the county may elect to reopen mental health treatment beds at the Sacramento Mental Health Treatment Center or contract with another healthcare facility to provide care to patients who require acute level mental health care. The county must produce a plan to ensure timely placement of patients awaiting care in the jails in appropriate offsite inpatient care facilities and a timeline for the implementation of the plan. Please provide this plan within 30 days. At that time, class counsel will determine whether it is necessary to move for enforcement in the federal court on this matter. Thank you for your attention to this serious issue. The county has not explored all alternatives to the jail annex, so it's really important that we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairperson, the next caller is also the caller that got dropped.
From off agenda?
Correct.
Okay, we'll just, we'll take this and then we'll just vote on the consent calendar. But there's no other callers for the consent counter?
No.
Okay, we'll just take this.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
The county has not explored all alternatives to the jail annex, which includes repurposing the space in the four jail courtrooms and the basement underneath for an ADA and HIPAA compliant booking loop. Despite a new billion dollar price tag, the county continues a plan to expand the downtown jail, which no longer offers the once-promised protection from legal action. There are faster and cheaper ways to meet the Mays consent decree that will be more effective at avoiding further legal consequences. The county can no longer justify its $1 billion jail expansion on the basis of facing legal action if they don't move forward with construction. The county is facing legal action right now if they do not get people out that jail and into community care as soon as possible. The county's response is insufficient and lacks urgency when real options exist, like reopening the closed half of the county mental health treatment center. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes your public comments for off agenda and for consent, and I will bring up the voting.
Okay, please vote on the consent counter.
Okay, unanimous vote, and let the records reflect that Supervisor Serna abstained from items 2 and 12. And for your first presentation, this is the presentation of resolution proclaiming October 7th, 2023 as ostomy awareness day.
This is about ostomy awareness day. An ostomy is a type of surgery that creates an opening in the abdomen that allows for the removal of bodily waste when a person has lost the normal function of digestive or urinary systems due to birth defects, colorectal cancer, bladder cancer, Crohn's disease, ulcerative colitis, and other medical conditions. They are also necessary in cases of severe abdominal or pelvic trauma resulting from accidents or from injuries sustained during military service. Approximately 1 million Americans have an ostomy with approximately 100,000 new ostomy procedures performed each year. And I know Dan is going to go into a little more detail about why we're here to recognize this today. But the purpose of this is to serve as a reminder to the public that this is a life-saving and a life-restoring surgery and that public education and awareness are vital to ensure those who are living with an ostomy face no discrimination and are accepted as normal, healthy individuals. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I recognize October 7th as ostomy awareness day and further encourage public acceptance of ostomy surgery and continent diversion surgery to help better understand that ostomies are lifesavers. And Dan, I'll turn it over to you to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. My name is Dan Drydock-Shockley. I'm retired Navy, Operation Desert Storm, enduring freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom veteran. Eleven and a half years ago, I was diagnosed with a hereditary colon cancer syndrome. As a result, I went through this life-saving surgery, and if I didn't say anything, you'd never know I had an ostomy. I go about my life as if nothing happened. And on behalf of the United Ostomy Associations of America, I've been an ambassador for that organization for the last decade. And for the last six years, when Supervisor Pat Yum was a council member at Elk Grove, he sponsored my ostomy awareness proclamations. I'm sorry. So I want to thank the county for taking the time to sponsor this request, and I just want to be a positive source of inspiration for those in the community and national, as far as international, that hear about my journey or read about it, that ostomies are lifesavers and I'm a firm believer that a positive attitude will help you get over that edge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Always a pleasure to see you, Drydock, and congratulations on your recent recognition from the floor of the Senate.
Okay, your next presentation is the presentation of resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of Area for Agency on Aging.
I believe, German.
Actually, I'm pinch hitting for German this morning. Pam Miller.
Okay, well, it's my distinct pleasure to be up here, present a resolution to the Area for Agency on Aging, celebrating your 50th anniversary, and you're hosting an open house on September 28th. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The Area for Agency on Aging is one of the six original organizations designated by the, I hope this is all accurate because this is information that you sent over to us.
Sure it is.
Designated by the California Department of Aging and is a joint powers association that serves seven counties covering 6,578 square miles and is the largest agency on aging in the state. They began contracting with community agencies in 1974, and their first funded services were transportation, information, and referrals. And under Executive Director Pam Miller's guidance and leadership, the agency has expanded services beyond older American Act programming to include aging and disability resource connections and case management programming. And so it's a pleasure for me, on behalf of the Board, to congratulate you and the Area for Agency on Aging on your 50th anniversary, and we all wish you many more successful and productive years, Pam. So thank you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, everybody. I can't tell you how proud I am of this organization. Thank you for, I'm a little bit shorter than he is. You know, we have had a wonderful relationship with Sacramento County, and over the last, I think, well, since the pandemic, it has really become extremely strong. You know, we partnered with Sacramento County to get meals out to folks that were sheltering in place during the pandemic. And then we're now doing the Senior Connection Program with you. We're doing the ATT program with you. And so I think our relationship is so strong, and we really, really appreciate your recognition today, and I hope to see you at our 50th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, as a representative of the Board, it's a pleasure serving that agency and all the work that you're doing and taking care of our seniors. And I just wanted to acknowledge that in addition to this resolution, all of the supervisors up here on the dais chipped in on a basket for the raffle for the open house.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Yum.
So there's some great stuff in there representing each one of the districts in Sacramento County.
Awesome, thank you.
Now, Pam, sorry, I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me down here for a photo with Pam. If you don't mind, this is.
Absolutely.
of Sacramento Covered.
Kelly and Crude, do you want to join me at the podium?
First of all, I got to say, I didn't get the memo about the pink. Apparently Sue did.
Yes, she did.
All right. Glad there's a good showing here. So, members of the Board and public, it's my honor this morning to present this resolution honoring the 25th anniversary of Sacramento Covered to Sacramento Covers CEO Kelly Bennett, off to my right here. And I do want to read from the resolution, especially because the first, whereas has some particular, particularly personal meaning to me as well. So I'll go ahead and do that and then invite Kelly to say a few words. So, whereas Sacramento Covered was created out of the Mayor's Commission on Our Children's Health, a program launched in 1998 by Mayor Joe Serna Jr. to connect uninsured children to coverage and medical homes. The program created by the four local health systems, Dignity Kaiser Permanente, Sutter Health, and UC Davis Health System, was administered by the City of Sacramento until July 2013, then became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And whereas, after 25 years of serving the Sacramento region, Sacramento Covered's umbrella of service has expanded well beyond access to insurance. To begin the next 25 years of serving and supporting communities, a new name has been developed to better reflect the expanded services, mission, and the new communities we serve. Sacramento Covered is now Community Health Works with a new mission, to advance community, social, and economic health, one person at a time. And whereas, go ahead and applaud. And whereas, Community Health Works' model of care aims to promote health equity and improve the well-being of underserved communities by addressing social determinants of health through community health workers. Over 100 community health workers facilitate a wide range of services tailored to the unique challenges faced by our clients, including but not limited to health coverage and connections to care, enhanced care management, community supports, and reentry services. And whereas, since 1998, Community Health Works co-he-wo, that's the parenthetical, has been employing and training compassionate, hardworking, and brilliant members from the communities we serve. Many of the team members bring life experiences to the work, often relating to some of the same struggles Community Health Works aims to address. And whereas, in 19, I'm sorry, in 2022, Community Health Works programs served 21,729 unique clients, providing more than 124,720 services to some of the most vulnerable in our local communities. our local communities. Served 11,055 community members with critical navigation, health literacy, and education, as well as connection to community resources, and enrolled and renewed 2,411 individuals into health coverage. And whereas, Community Health Workers provided direct services to 8,917 patients in five local hospital emergency departments, with 54% of patients served by emergency department community health workers' clients receiving assistance with follow-up appointments after hospital discharge. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors do hereby commend Community Health Works, formerly Sacramento Covered, for their vital role in serving the most vulnerable individuals in our Sacramento community. So, that is the verbiage from the resolution. I just want to say, in my tenure here on the Board and having the privilege to work closely with Kelly and her team over the years, it's been a real privilege, and it really is something to reflect upon, which goes for a lot of things that we do here, and that is, we can't do it alone. We obviously, as a county, have a charge to provide public health services to the extent that it's necessary, and we learned quite a bit about that during the pandemic. But as was noted in the resolution, and the numbers especially, this really goes to show the value of teamwork here in Sacramento when it comes to making sure people are healthy, especially those that need help the most. So with that, Kelly, the mic is yours.
Thank you so much, Supervisor. Wow. One does feel short up here. So, I'm going to take just my tiny bit of privilege and provide my comments. Thank you so much, Supervisor Serna, and good morning, Supervisors.
I'm going to go ahead and sit down, and then we're going to get a big photo afterward.
Please, please. So I'm deeply honored to stand here before you today to accept this resolution from the Board, celebrating our organization's renaming to Community Health Works Coho. You got it right. While marking our 25th anniversary, not sure how that's possible, because I am so young, we extend our heartfelt gratitude to the County Board for recognizing our efforts as we reach this significant milestone in our journey. A quarter of a century makes it sound even longer. It's a considerable stretch of time, and during this period, our commitment to community health has grown even stronger. From our humble beginnings as a special commission of the late Mayor Joe Serna Jr. in 1998, with a staff of three, we evolved into a thriving, independent nonprofit organization with a team of 150 as of this week, and over 100 of those are community health workers, serving more than 20,000 unique Sacramento residents annually. We've expanded our focus to address the social drivers of health, including food insecurity and homelessness, to name a few, and in addition to healthcare and coverage barriers. We'll always have Sacramento Covered, though. Today, we celebrate not only our past, but also the prospect of an even brighter future. The renaming of our organization to Community Health Works reflects our ever-evolving commitment to accurately represent the profound impact we make in the lives of individuals and families. Our mission is to advance community, social, and economic health, one person at a time. Our exceptional team, some of whom are here today, our team of community health workers is the backbone of our organization. These individuals are the heroes who tirelessly work to enhance the well-being of our communities. This resolution not only honors their dedication, but also signifies the vital role they play in the lives of countless individuals. It's fitting that our organization's new name directly reflects their invaluable contributions. We named ourselves after community health workers. We wish to express our gratitude to our many supporters, including the four regional health systems, Dignity, Kaiser, Sutter Health, and UC Davis. Jen Oblak is here from Kaiser Permanente. Thanks for being here, Jen. Their seed funding in the beginning and enduring partnerships exemplify the effectiveness of our work over time. And in conclusion, thank you for your continued support and for being part of our journey as we enter this new chapter as Community Health Works. We're excited about the opportunities ahead and remain deeply committed to improving community health one step at a time. Thank you all so much.
I'd like to invite, through the chair, my colleagues down in the pit for a photo.
You get to hold this. We'll get in the back. You guys get in the front.
Yay, get in here. Guys, we're here. Where are we going? Over here. And I just take my quick pictures real quick that I send out to the board if enough, then you can. One, two, three. You take a deep breath and a big smile. There you go.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm so small. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Let me take some. One, two.
Okay.
All right. So your last presentation is the Presentation of Resolution -- excuse me, let me get to the right page -- is the Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming October 2023 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month.
How are you? Good to see you. Good to see you. Okay, I'll start out here, Joe, then I'll turn it over to you really quick here. So we're here to present you with a resolution in honor of our Employee Giving Campaign Month. In the fall of each year, Sacramento County joins with communities throughout California in supporting Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month, a consolidated charitable effort benefiting numerous organizations and causes in our community and beyond. Currently, there are five federations included in the 2023-24 Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign, including Creating Healthier Communities, America's Charities, America's Best Local Charities, Global Impact, Earth Share, and United Way California Capital Region. And of course, Joe, you're going to explain what each of those are, right? A wide variety of organizations are represented in those five federations that make up the Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign. And the generosity of our county employees improves our neighborhoods, communities, nation, and makes the world a better place. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I hereby recognize the month of October 2023 as Sacramento County Employee Giving Campaign Month in Sacramento, and encourage Sacramento County employees to consider participating in the Employee Giving Campaign Month by attending organized activities throughout the next several weeks and lending their support to this annual charitable giving program. Thank you. Joe?
Thank you. Good morning. So I have been involved with the Giving Campaign for 18 years in my department. Finally made it to the top. The Public Defender's Office is the hosting department this year, so that makes the Chair our Public Defender, Amanda Benson. I am the lead loaned executive. Our other loaned executives are Maggie Castilla, who is present here, and Julia Granados from my department. The other departments, the co-chairs this year are the Department of Water Resources, so Michael Peterson, the director, is the co-chair, and then Mariah Dennis is one of the lead loaned executives, Lilly Imani is the other lead loaned executive. The other co-chair department is the Agricultural Commission and Ways and Measures. The co-chair is Chris Flores, and her lead loaned executive is Laura McCready. I would note that that brings us to the end of the list of departments for the Employee Giving Campaign. So if you're in the room and you're a county employee, or if you are listening, we're looking for more departments to begin hosting the Giving Campaign. I know it's going to come up at one of the department chair meetings. Maybe Ann can give a little nudge so we can get --
That's exactly what will happen this week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So we can get fresh blood to join in the campaign. The campaign runs from October 1st through the 31st. Our slogan this year is "Giving Together, Building a Brighter Future." I've got to say, this is one of the favorite things I do in my job. I get to see county employees give their time throughout the year, and I get to also see how they give financially to some of the charities in our local community, whether that's local charities such as Loaves &amp; Fishes, Sacramento Make-A-Wish, or Boys &amp; Girls Clubs, or whether that's global charities such as UNICEF or Doctors Without Borders. Our goal this year is to raise $200,000. Over the years, as you can anticipate, our employees have literally given millions to local and global charities throughout the county and throughout the world. We're shooting for having 4% of our employees participate. That sounds low, but every person helps. It's, you know, a way to motivate that. I would also point out that we have the County 5K, which is a very fun event. That will be October 27th. Hope to see as many of you out there hoping for another beautiful day. I just want to thank you again for your support and leadership on the Giving Campaign. With your help, we can reach our goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And I'm sure my colleagues will all be joining me at that 5K. It's walk or run, right? Clarify. Let's get a photo with you.
I'll just note, too, that 4% is actually over 500 people, so.
Yeah.
Here we go. One, two, three. Deep breath and a big smile. Deep breath. There we go. It really works.
I'm done with it. Thank you for the nice resolution. When they asked, I declined. I said, "No, I don't need that." And then I was jealous seeing them, and I'm glad you --
Glad you finally made it to the top.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. We are right on time. Right on time, Chair. Okay, item 47. This is your first hearing item. This is a request for appeal fee waiver for administrative hearing in the matter of Angel A.
Good morning, Honorable Chair Supervisors. My name is Blake Saquero, Deputy County Counsel, representing Department of Finance. If I may have a moment, please. Is anybody here on behalf of Angel A? Honorable Chair, this hearing was scheduled for 10:30. It's currently 10:36. It's my understanding the appellant was appropriately noticed of the hearing and sent in a correspondence in response to it. She is not present, and she does have a burden to establish that she qualifies for a fee waiver. She is not here, so I would ask this Board to deny her fee waiver request.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody on the phone?
We do not have any callers or anyone in person.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Motion, a second. And let me ask you just a clarifying question, Blake. What is the criteria that we use for a fee waiver?
Excellent question, Supervisor. Currently, Title IV for business licensing is silent as to the qualifications, or the process, or even the time for the fee waiver. That may be something the Board wishes that we amend or create in the future. Currently, it's at Board discretion.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and a bit of a rhetorical question, but I know typically this issue might come up if someone appeals, and they're successful in their appeal, then it would also be within the Board's discretion at that point if we wanted to return the appeal fee. Is that correct?
That is correct. So in some counties, they consider it after the appeal, in others, as a result of due process and the inability to pay, the supervisors will consider allowing the appeal to go forward without the payment accepted beforehand.
Okay, well, I thank you. I mean, the applicant's not here to hear from. We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Thank you.
That concludes your morning items, but you do have closed session.
Well, this morning did not go as I expected, so. Oh, let's do it. Yeah, let's get our nominations out of the way. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
For item 54, I'll give you guys a second to grab your nominations. Continuing to October 17th, the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to October 24th, the Children's Coalition, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Veterans Advisory Commission, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to November 7th, the Adult and Aging Commission, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council. And for your first item this morning, we have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please continue to November 7th.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Desmond.
Please continue to November 7th.
And Mr. Hume.
For D5 as well, continue to November 7th.
Okay. Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to October 17.
And then Mr. Hume.
Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. Ferrells Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to November 7th, please.
First five commission.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Scott Moke and continuing the remainder to November 7th.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Frost?
Okay, I would like to nominate John Burchielli and Tamaria -- I'm sorry, Tamara Sandifer, known as Ms. T.
Okay. And then would you like to continue the remainder to October 17?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend continuing to November 7th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. We'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, I want to continue to October 17, but I also want to make a comment that I am going to, from my glass house, throw stones at my colleagues. There's a lot of openings on this board, and they're having trouble getting a quorum. So if we can -- I have interviews set up. If we can pay closer attention to that, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Noted. And I would continue my item to October 24th, please.
Thank you, sir. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Frost?
I nominate Rachel Williams.
Thank you. And then --
For the at-large.
Thank you.
For the at-large commissioners, Chiefs recommend continuing to November 7th.
Got it. Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. We'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to November 7th.
And then Supervisor Hume.
Same for District 5. Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Reappoint Joey McDaniel.
Thank you. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, and with that, the public meeting, we are on recess until 2:00 PM, and we will reconvene in closed session. 2:03, and we'll call the afternoon session to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll start on our afternoon calendar, item 48.
Okay, for item 48, this is the Taverner Wireless Communication Facility Appeal. Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 9257 Taverner Road in the Consumnis community. Ferrells Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to November 7th, please.
First five commission.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Scott Moke and continuing the remainder to November 7th.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Frost.
Okay, I would like to nominate John Burchielli and Tamaria, I'm sorry, Tamara Sandifer, known as Ms. T.
Okay. And then would you like to continue the remainder to October 17th?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend continuing to November 7th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board. We'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, I want to continue to October 17th, but I also want to make a comment that I am going to, from my glass house, throw stones at my colleagues. There's a lot of openings on this board, and they're having trouble getting a quorum. So if we can, I have interviews set up. If we can pay closer attention to that, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Noted. And I would continue my item to October 24th, please.
Thank you, sir. Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. And then Supervisor Frost.
I nominate Rachel Williams.
Thank you. And then-
For the at-large.
Thank you.
For the at-large commissioners, Chiefs recommend continuing to November 7th.
Got it. Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. We'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to November 7th.
And then Supervisor Hume.
Same for District 5. Please continue to November 7th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Reappoint Joey McDaniel.
Thank you. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. And with that, the, the public meeting, we are on recess until 2:00 PM, and we will reconvene in closed session. 2:03, and we'll call the afternoon session to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll start on our afternoon calendar, item 48.
Okay, for item 48, this is the Taverner Wireless Communication Facility Appeal. Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 9257 Taverner Road in the Kasunus community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, thank you. And so what I'm going to do is, after we hear the staff presentation, I am going to indulge a request from some members of the community to give them a little extra time to do a presentation in return for some other members of the public here to kind of yield their time to you. So I think we have a PowerPoint already provided metric cable.
It's already queued in with Metro.
Okay, okay. So, okay, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. So Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to provide the staff's presentation regarding the appeal of the Planning Commission approval of the Taverner Wireless Communication Facility. My presentation is going to focus on the requested entitlements and the project description. I will include a short summary of federal regulations that pertain to wireless communication facilities and government oversight. And then I will also include some information on the advisory meetings and the Planning Commission hearing for this item. So the site itself is 9257 Taverner Road. It's about three, excuse me, quarter mile north of the intersection of Taverner Road and Shorthorn Road in the Kasunus community. The site itself is developed with a single-family dwelling and various accessory structures. Community context, the surrounding area, the site itself is zoned A5, which is agricultural five acres. Then the surrounding land uses, there are residential uses to the north, south, and west in the A5 zoning district. And then to the east and southeast, you have the Folsom South Canal that directly abuts the project site, and then more residential uses in the AR5 zone further down to the south. I won't read this whole slide. Effectively, the entitlement request is a use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in the A5 zoning district, specifically a new tower. And along with that, they are requesting a special development permit to deviate from maximum height in the zoning group that this property is in, which is Group 1. The height that's allowed is 55 feet. They are requesting 90 feet. They are also requesting that the minimum separation from the surrounding Group 1 properties be reduced. The minimum setback for this site would be 270 feet from all boundaries. They are requesting on the, let's see here, they would be 185 feet from the north property boundary, 76.6 feet from the south property boundary, and 170 feet from the west property boundary. And then finally, there is a design review required for this as well. Touching on environmental review, the environmental document that was prepared for this project is an initial study mitigated negative declaration. This was released for public review on June 16th, 2023. The impacts discussed as part of this report were land use, biological resources, aesthetics, hazardous materials, and there were mitigation measures that were brought in. Responses to comments received were also included, and the entire package is Attachment 15 in your project materials. The environmental document did determine that the project would result in a less than significant impact with the implementation of the mitigation measures. These included construction emission control, Swainson hawk surveys, bird and raptor nesting protocols, and cultural resources unanticipated discovery guidance. This is the site plan. You can see that the site includes a primary residence at the center, numerous trees, some outbuildings, and then the proposed equipment and tower site is on the south side of the property. And there would be a new driveway that would come in off of Taverner Road, shown in gray, that would access and maintain the site. The Folsom South Canal would be to the east, and the only change to the site would be the addition of the cell facility. This is the ground equipment plan. I do want to note that the initial development would only include the tower and two pieces of equipment, but there are additional sites shown for colocation facilities, so they would be accommodating future colocations. These are the elevations of the proposed tower. When I say 90 feet, the 90 feet does go to the top of the monopine stealth design. The tower itself would be 85 feet. The stealth design, as I said, monopine, so a tree. So the applicant did provide these photo simulations. They are from various locations around the site. The photo simulations I do want to note are from, mostly from public roadways, although there is one from a private residence across Taverner. The applicant does have additional simulations in their presentation, and then I believe some of the neighbors also have some mockups of the potential visual impact of the proper, of the proposed tower. So this, this first visual simulation here, the photo sim, is from Taverner Road facing southeast towards the project site. The tower is not visible. This photo simulation is looking northeast, again off of Taverner Road, and you can see the potential tower all the way to the right of the proposed simulation, just a little bit above the bank of trees along the property boundary. This is the photo simulation that's from an actual property. This is directly to the west across Taverner Road from a residence, their driveway, and the monopine is shown effectively in the center of this proposed, or this photo simulation. And then finally, this is a photo simulation taken from the subdivision across the Folsom South Canal to the southeast from Jod, Jodhopper Court, and you can see the monopine basically over the roof line of the home in the foreground. So I'm going to stop here on the slides. I did want to go over just a little bit of the federal regulations that pertain to local oversight of wireless facilities. I believe the applicant will likely go into this as well. So Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 governs federal, state, and local government oversight of citing what they call personal wireless service facilities, which we refer to as wireless communication facilities in the zoning code. The Telecommunications Act is enforced by the Federal Communications Commission, or FCC, and it does contain some provisions that apply here when we are reviewing the wireless facilities. So some of these, and this is also in my staff report, include that local jurisdictions cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provisions of personal wireless services, meaning that we cannot deny a cell tower application if the proposed cell tower is the least intrusive means to cover a significant gap in coverage. And these are further defined as least intrusive means has been determined through case law to mean that the applicant must show an alternative site analysis. And then a significant gap means that the applicant must demonstrate that there is a coverage gap. Local jurisdictions can't discriminate, prohibit, or have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. And in our situation, this means that if, this is a, for example, this is a T-Mobile carrier, we can't say that Verizon covers this area fine, and so T-Mobile, we don't consider this a coverage gap. It would need to be a coverage gap for this provider. Local jurisdictions do have to act within a reasonable period of time, and if we go beyond 150 days of processing time for a new tower, we do have to enter into what's called a tolling agreement with the applicants, and we are in one of those tolling agreements with these applicants. And then local jurisdictions cannot deny a wireless facility based on environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that the wireless facility complies with FCC regulations. We cannot, also, we cannot deny based on secondary effects such as property value diminishment that are based on perceived environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. This tower does meet the FCC regulations for emission levels. Local jurisdictions can deny based on aesthetics if the jurisdiction has specific design guidelines or standards, and there is substantial evidence that the proposed tower is not compatible with those guidelines or standards. We do have some design guidelines that pertain, and I will speak about that in a moment. And then finally, denial of the application must be in writing, supported by substantial evidence. So I did want to go through that during my presentation, as it does bookend what we are able to consider for this application. So as I'd mentioned, the project proponents provided these coverage maps to demonstrate a gap in current coverage. So this is their map that they're showing the current coverage in the area, what they consider off-air, so no tower. And you can see that, the applicants will explain this further, but effectively, light means less coverage, and then you get darker pink and you get better coverage. And so that's current, and then this is their expected coverage should the tower get installed. So, no tower, tower. So moving to the advisory meetings, the Kasunus CPAC met on May 24th, 2023, and did recommend that the Planning Commission deny with a 5-0 vote the requested entitlements. There were about 50 members of the public that did attend this meeting, and the concerns were focused on aesthetics, health effects, the lack of a need for a tower, and the incompatibility with the community. The other advisory recommendation for this project is the Design Review Advisory Committee, which met on May 11th, 2023, and recommended that the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with our design guidelines. The project was brought to the Planning Commission for hearing on July 24th, 2023, and the Planning Commission, after deliberation, voted three yes, zero no, one abstained, and one was absent to approve the conditional use permit, the special development permit, and the design review. On July 26th, 2023, the Kasunus CPAC voted four yes, three no, to appeal the Planning Commission approval on behalf of the community. And then on the July 27th, the Kasunus CPAC filed the community interest appeal with the Clerk of the Board's office.
Excuse me, Jessica, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Jessica, I was curious to know, did the Planning Commissioner that abstained give a reason for the abstention?
He did not.
Okay. Thank you.
So staff's project analysis remains the same as during the Planning Commission hearing. The proponent did not modify the proposed project after the appeal. The staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code as conditioned. We believe that the project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses as it does support the rural community in providing a needed service. The environmental document found that there are no significant environmental concerns. The Design Review Advisory Committee did find this project in substantial compliance with our design guidelines. Part of that was that the monopine stealth design was considered consistent with the surrounding area's mature trees, and it did reduce attention to the tower, which is the purpose of the design guideline related to cell facilities. Let's see. Staff found that the project did comply, as I'd mentioned, with the standards for limiting public exposure to radio frequency energy. And then, as I had mentioned, the cellular coverage would support the surrounding rural residential community. So staff continues to recommend approval of the project and recommend denial of the appeal. If you were to take staff's recommendation, these would be the action items for the board. And with that, my presentation is complete. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. I don't see any supervisors queued up. Many other staff presentations?
No, sir.
Okay. And then are we going to hear from the applicant? And you'll need to swear in the applicant.
Yeah, and then we also have a PowerPoint from the applicant as well. So I'll go ahead and swear in everyone that's in the room right now who's going to testify before this board.
Even public comment?
Everyone, yeah.
So if you're going to be providing public comment, you'll have to take this oath as well.
Yes. So if you, please stand to be sworn. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate response as I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And then when you get to the podium, please state your name for the record in the statement I have been sworn.
Good afternoon, Chair, and members of the board. Kevin Sullivan, I have been sworn. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and we have a staff presentation. Let me just see. There we go. Okay, I figured it out. Whoops, I didn't figure it out. There we go. All right, we'll run through this as quickly as we can. I know you've got a pretty heavy agenda. The proposed facility is to provide both new and improved T-Mobile wireless coverage and network capacity for the Wilton community. The lease area is part of a very large piece of property, almost six acres. The lease, the property size is over 251,000 square feet, when the lease area is 2,500 square feet, so we're less than 1% of the property size. We've got minor grading for all of the project work. The facility, after constructed, is going to be unoccupied, and it's going to generate virtually no traffic except for occasional maintenance trips. The lease area has an eight-foot-high fence with green privacy slats. All the equipment is going to be, I think a maximum is six feet high, so below what's visible. Six other possible locations in the search ring or the potential coverage area were reviewed as possible locations for the facility, but they were rejected as infeasible, mostly because we couldn't find property owners that were interested, and then one facility was actually outside the search ring. Project operations, as noted by staff, will comply, must comply, with the FCC RF health safety standards. The detailed mitigated negative declaration determined that with some pretty standard mitigation measures, the project would not result in any significant environmental impacts. The project site is not in or near any designated scenic roadways or corridors. The facility lease area is about 200 feet away from the pavement on Taverner Road, and there are many oak, pine, and other trees that are up to 56 feet high that are near the lease site and provide some screening. The nearest off-site homes are about 570 feet to the southeast, 275 feet to the south, 325 feet to the west, and 470 feet to the northwest. The facility will comply with all county codes, including for noise and fire. Here's an aerial view. It's not a simulation. It just shows, shows the surrounding kind of visual landscape. This is a segment of Taverner Road looking northeast from the entrance to the residence on the property, and you can see all of the tall trees lining the road. You also see tall utility poles with crossarms, transformers. You can see those up in that area, and then, of course, all of the high wires. This is another view of Taverner Road. This is looking southwest from the entrance to the property. Again, we've got tall trees on both sides of the road, and then we've got these tall utility lines with crossarms, wires, transformers, all as part of the visual landscape. Here's an aerial view of the site. The red pin shows the residence on the site, and the yellow asterix shows the approximate location of the facility. And you can see that this area is just ringed with trees, you know, going up to 56 feet in height. The facility is needed- The facility is needed to fill a significant gap in T-Mobile's coverage. It's going to provide both new and enhanced, improved wireless facilities, strong, reliable in-building and in-vehicle coverage that will enable users to take advantage of the full array of T-Mobile services, including home internet, streaming, voice, and other data requirements. The facility is also needed to fill a significant gap in capacity in the area. With all, with everybody using so many different wireless and other devices right now, there's extreme demand that's put on each individual telecommunication facility, and they can only handle so much. And so there's not just a coverage gap in this area, but there's also a capacity gap that this proposed facility will help fill. The T-Mobile's five nearest area network facilities around the proposed site received and routed almost 250 E911 calls in a recent 30-day period, and this facility is going to enhance E911 capabilities for the area network. The facility footprint, as we're going to see in some later slides, is going to cover many hundreds of unserved and underserved homes with the strong, reliable in-building coverage. And the facility is also going to provide new reliable coverages for segments of Dillard Road, which has almost 4,600 average daily trips, Clay Station Road with over 3,000 average daily trips, and Taverner Road, a segment with almost 2,100 average daily traffic trips. Here's a slide from some information recently provided to the county. The slide on the left, well, let me show you a couple of things. The Taverner Road facility is right here. It's the site up on the top right. We're also showing another proposed vertical bridge site four miles away down here. It's not the subject of this application, but some in the community have said that one site can serve the entire area. You don't need two sites. And as you're going to see from a series of slides, that's just not accurate. So, the slide on the left shows, anything in the red, yellow, orange is showing very, very poor, weak, unreliable coverage, and that's pretty much what we have in this area. Over on the right-hand side of this slide, again, there's the Taverner proposed site up in the right-hand side. This shows the number of users attempting to access T-Mobile's network but not able to do so because there just isn't reliable coverage. Here is a new set of coverage maps using a new computer modeling, which we have just recently provided to the county. Shows the same thing as the other slides, just with some different colors. So again, we have the Taverner proposed site up kind of center here. The proposed Mann Road site is down here. Good reliable coverage, which is what T-Mobile is trying to get for its area network, is shown in green. The kind of pinkish and blue shows very weak, unreliable coverage, and that's currently what we have in this area. With the proposed site, you can see there's a significant increase in the very strong reliable in-coverage, or in-building coverage shown in green. Again, that enables users to be able to access the full array of T-Mobile's network services. Here's another slide showing the Taverner site up here, not on, but the Mann Road proposed site on, and you can see that you cannot have just one site that covers this significant gap, that part of T-Mobile's area network. And then here's another slide showing both Taverner on, again, filling a significant gap up here, Mann Road on, but still, there's a significant gap in the area. One site can't cover the entire gap area. Here's some information that T-Mobile was able to prepare based on using U.S. Census data, or U.S. Census Bureau data. I'm sure you've all heard of Census Trax, but you can drill down deeper on that and get certain population blocks from the U.S. Census Bureau. And when you take a look at those population dots or blocks and overlay the new reliable, strong, in-building coverage, it turns out that there are potentially 3,700 gained users with now the strongest RF coverage and signal if the Taverner Road site is on. Here's an aerial that just tries to replicate by hand what the strong, reliable, in-building coverage footprint would be in the area. You can see many hundreds of homes, and then you can also see the segments of Dillard Road, Taverner Road, and Clay Station Road where users on those road segments would have improved coverage. So based on that, we're available to answer any questions, but we also request that the board deny the appeal, uphold the Planning Commission's action to certify the MND, and also approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then uphold the Planning Commission's actions to approve the three permits for the site. And we can answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you. No questions right now? Did you have anything to add?
Nothing to add, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so no more presenters. Supervisor Frost?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question regarding the extra facilities that were also marked on the property. Would those be coming in the future for future approvals? And would they consist of the same type of facility and at the same extended height, such as six facilities on that one property?
So you're talking about what's in their potential lease area?
Yeah, Slide seven.
So, yeah, the, the tower is set up to allow colocations, so additional antennas and their equipment within the lease area. It looks like they are expecting between three or four from the lease area and the outlines that they've shown. The additional antennas usually go below the primary antenna. They do show their antennas at the top. There is the ability, though, to do a colocation where you do add another set of antennas to the top of the tower. That is something that the FCC requires us to permit by right, and that any of these co-located antennas and equipment, provided that they're on the tower itself and then within their lease area that you would approve today, would be done through a building permit. So you would not see those again.
So they would just be, they would be automatic and could potentially add extra towers?
Just antennas to the existing tower? Just one tower? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost. Then we'll move to public comment. So Dan, why don't we start?
Excuse me, I'm the CPAC president.
Okay. That's fine. I'm going to, I'm going to have Dan go first.
Oh, okay.
Give his presentation first.
Actually, Chairperson, he's the appellant.
Was he on here? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My mistake, my mistake.
I've never, I've been here many times.
So you're John?
Never, never in this position. Yes, sir.
Okay.
First of all, thank you very much for your opening comments to let the members of the public who have attended make their presentation. I just wanted to give you some background on our decisions, both the 5-0 unanimous decision that we made to disapprove the project, and in the decision we made to send it forward in an appeal. One of the primary reasons we did that was that in the initial meeting, we had, I believe, over 50 residents present at a CPAC meeting, and the vast majority of those were there to speak against the proposed tower. We asked many questions as a board, and one particularly that wound up inside the packet that I believe was still unanswered is from a regulation standpoint, when you take a 55-foot tower and ask for an exception to a 90-foot tower, and you approve that, at what point do we, do we set a boundary? I mean, we're doing one now on Fig Road that is 130 feet in the air. Do we go to 200 feet? And what is it, as we go through these consistently at the CPACs, at the local level, what is it you want us to continue to consider? One of the things we asked specifically is, in this geographic area of our part of the county, what was really done to place this tower in a vineyard or in an agricultural piece of property that would allow it to stay out of a specific residential neighborhood? And if, in fact, those towers were to go higher, okay, and the signal strength were to be increased, would it be possible to reroute these things where they were not such a visual and lifestyle impact on the people that live around it? That was a big concern of ours. Secondly, in voting, we've voted appeals before, and we've voted them all the way back to 2006, and we rarely win them. But we, I think one of the differentiating things in this particular request was the personal nature of it, in that it, there were so many people there with so many individual stories on how this impacted their lifestyle and their quality of life, and it just didn't seem, particularly to me, and I won't speak for the rest of my board, but we did vote together to disapprove this, that not enough was done to see if there was a suitable alternative. So I just wanted to make sure you understood where we came from when we voted this. The other thing that we considered is the fact that if the residents wanted to come to you, the final arbiter in this, it would have cost them almost $4,000 to get here, just to talk to you, as they're going to talk to you today. By us rejecting the proposal and placing the appeal in front of you, at least gives them a voice to tell you their side of the story. So, again, thank you, and I really appreciate it.
John, thank you, and I apologize for not paying close attention to my notes, and I thank you for those comments. Okay, so now we'll move on to public comment. Was that the last presenter? So Dan, we'll start with you.
So I'll ask Metro Cable to pull up his PowerPoint.
And I'm going to put eight minutes on the clock for you.
Gotcha. My name is Dan Lawrence, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you. I just want to go on the record that Mr. Dan's, there are two members that signed up that gave up their time, so we did remove them off the list. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to start. This is, we're requesting that the tower be denied, the variances, not the tower, but the variances be denied. This goes over history that you just heard. There was 50 people at the CPAC meeting, and over 100 letters were submitted requesting that the variances be denied. In Wilton, it's a his area that we're very much ranch-oriented and country-oriented. We have a number of agricultural-based businesses, and it's a very rural lifestyle, and that's why we went out to help to Wilton as for that wilderness lifestyle. Here's a coverage map brought down by the, from the different carriers. So you can see that T-Mobile has a 5G. The comments, so they have 5Gs at the tower location and around that area. AT&amp;T has great coverage also, 5Gs. Verizon has a little spotty here or there, but they have 5G for most of the area. So the actual, you know, does it have to be there for the coverage? I don't know that the, that that argument really weighs heavily. It's one of these things that they have produced papers, and which is right? Is the ones that they produce right, or is the ones that they show on the internet right? And aesthetics, you can deny it based on aesthetics. The same road that they were looking at, if you look about the same location, the other direction, you have trees that are dying in there. The tree that they use for their production also, you show right up front, there's trees dying. So a lot of those trees that they're saying are going to cover it are going to be gone. The oaks are all deciduous, so in the wintertime, there won't be leaves on them. There's going to be a straight shot to the huge tower. There's a picture of it. The thing they didn't put is they're going to clear the roadway to make a road to the tower. So you're going to have such a clear view of that large tower right as you go down Taverner Here's some pictures to show the impact. This is from Taverner Road near Shorthorn. So the tower is going to be looming over those. If the variance is allowed, if the variance wasn't allowed, the tower would be a reasonable height. The variance is what puts this tower, so it's so, it stands out. It's going to be, anyway. You can see that down the road, and this is from the ranch side.
Dan, 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 let me stop you for a second.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I stopped the clock too. Supervisor Turner?
Thank you. Just before you go into these series of slides, is that a drone, or is that a balloon, or what is that?
That's balloons. What we did is we took balloons and fishing line that has a meter on it. We went up, let 100 feet of line out, figured with the drag on the line and a little bit of wind, you're going to get a better perspective of the impact of the tower on the community. And so we then went around and took pictures. It was a community effort to take pictures from different locations, saying, you know, where's this tower going to be from my yard? And you can see it's, it looms over the neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Very impactful to us all. Okay to continue? Yep, clock's running. So here's another picture of the tower from the ranch side. You can see how it stands far above all the other trees there that they say are going to shield it. Another picture that you can see it over the horizon, and that's at the 90-feet level. That's not at the 120 feet that this could go up to without ever coming before you again. You add another 20 feet to that, and it's going to be huge. You know, it's going to be a landmark that doesn't need to be a landmark and shouldn't be. Look at that one. And that's from the ranch, almost, no, 1,500 feet away. It dominates the landscape. And you know what? I think I got it pretty much under the 10 minutes. You have another one that shows a tower out there. My plea to you is that the coverage is inconsistent, where you have coverage of 5G, and they're saying you don't have the coverage. The scenic area, I think that the road is, I think we need Wilton to stay Wilton and not have a tower right in the heart of Wilton. Please deny the variances.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Supervisor Hume?
Oh, do you guys have questions for me?
No, my comments are for the end.
After public comment, okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. I actually had a question for the applicant, not for you, Dan. Can you help? And is it, is it Bill? Right?
Kevin Sullivan?
Kevin, sorry, Kevin, Kevin. Can you, explain to me the discrepancy between the maps that you provided about coverage and these maps that Dan said were pulled off the internet?
So I can't talk about the Verizon or the AT&amp;T maps with respect to the T-Mobile map. What you're seeing is a national map at a super, super-high level. It is not getting down to the granular level of detail that are shown on the maps that have been provided to the county with respect to this site. So there are two different kinds of maps with two different kinds of scale and granularity. The maps that have been provided to the county show the most, you know, the best granularity focusing in on the particular potential coverage area. And even the map that, you know, is, was shown by some of the opposition, still doesn't show even the best or the highest level of, strongest level of T-Mobile coverage in the area. But again, the maps are for, you can't get down to the granular level when you're showing a map on a national scale.
Okay. But do, I mean, have you seen the presentation that Dan, did you see it ahead of time, what he was?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. So Madam Clerk, he used four minutes, so, you know, I'm fine if other people want to provide public comment.
Yeah, so that would be Jose and Tal.
That's fine, I'm not going to restrict people. So go ahead, we'll go into the next, the rest of the public commenters.
So next would be Fritz.
Good afternoon. My name is Fritz Kraus. I've been sworn. I'm a resident of the ranch. Prior, I was a resident on Taverner since 1986, so... Prior, I was a resident on Taverner since 1986, so Wilton has been my home for a long time. I'd like to point out that the briefing that we got earlier from the applicant was a little bit different in many regards from the briefing that was given to the Planning Commission. In one respect, they were the same. Both assert that the project fully complies with county codes. I would offer the fact that we're here talking about the need for three variances in order to approve this project, it really doesn't, it really doesn't comply with the current county codes. The new briefing differs from the original briefing because the original briefing had lots of pictures, like you saw, that had the monopine tree photoshopped into a number of situations. The neighborhood got together, and we said, what does that really look like to us? We went through the trouble of getting the helium balloons, raising them up, and taking pictures from all over to see what really is the visual impact to the people that live in the Wilton community of this tower. And the fact that they're talking about existing trees that are at sometimes 30 and 40 feet tall, oftentimes deciduous, the fact that they're relying on those trees to camouflage the tower, really is not going to work. We're going to be stuck with that in our backyard. The original briefing referred to a legal citation, Miramar Mobile Homes versus Oceanside, and they used that as the justification in the original briefing for the justification to say there wasn't really a requirement for an aesthetic review. But that particular legal citation only dealt with the redevelopment of an area in Oceanside. It didn't have anything to do with variances or with dropping a 90-foot-tall tree in the middle of a residential area. We just talked about the coverage maps, and we don't know what the basis is for the high resolution versus the national resolution, but I can tell you, we put that in, the address in, and that's where we got the resolution. There were five other locations that were considered, and they were all turned down because the folks said no. In those cases, one homeowner could cancel the project here. 50 homeowners came in, and we got an uphill battle. So I would please ask, retain the existing county codes and use that as saying, no, 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 we want to preserve Wilton, the Wilton that has been established through county codes. Thank you.
I would concede my time. I appreciate that. Connie said she was going to give me the extras.
Jose will give you time also.
Okay, that's going to be too complicated to keep track of, so let's, you folks come up as you're called by the clerk. And, you know, you don't need to feel pressure to take the whole two minutes either. You can obviously just say who you are, where you're from, and your position on this as well, so.
Gilbert.
My name is Gilbert Lujan. I've been sworn in. I'm a resident of the ranch. Research finds cell towers near homes can drop property values up to 20%. Therefore, we don't want this proposed tower to be installed because of the potential health risk and the impact on property values. The National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy found that 94% of homebuyers are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or camera. We moved to this location with the purpose of enjoy country life and after a lifelong term of savings and so forth, with the purpose of be part of the country living. We have Internet and phone services in our area. We are fine the way we are, I believe, and everybody else is in my neighborhood feels that way. Without this proposed cell tower, we'll be fine. Please do not approve this tower to be installed in this area. Thank you very much.
Okay, next will be Connie.
Good afternoon, Connie.
Good afternoon. I live in the ranch as well, and I didn't prepare any comments. I just know I'm really against a tower going in this location. I and my partner, we work full-time from our home in the ranch. All of that work is across the country. We have Internet, we have phones, they work more than fine. We are both very busy. I don't know where the lack of coverage occurs, but we don't see it. What we will see is this monstrosity of a tower looming over our community. And we moved there for a purpose too, and that was to enjoy country life, enjoy some space, and the beauty of natural things. And we want to be surrounded by those things and not additional person-made things like these towers, which can be expanded upon, and we aren't going to have any control over that. So I really hope that you listen to Fritz. If you're asking for a variance, it means it's not complying. They're asking for multiple variances. Please just rely on what exists, and don't allow this tower to go up in our very beautiful agricultural community. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Connie.
Wallace.
Wallace Bellamy, I have been sworn. My property is at 1270 Cadence Court, directly behind the Folsom South Canal. The presentation by the proponents show the tower obstructed by trees. The view from my property has a direct view of that tower unobstructed by trees. I've lived in Wilton, specifically the ranch, for 18 years. I moved to Wilton primarily for the quietness and the aesthetics of the country, as opposed to urban sprawl and to raise my children, dogs and horses. I've been diligent in improving the aesthetics and value there. My property is in visible range of the proposed tower project. Community should be a part of the decision-making process when it comes to cell antennas. Cell towers bring property devaluation, increase radiation, fire risk issues, especially this time of the year, additional noise, aesthetic issues. Research shows a negative valuation in rural areas of 7.6 to as much as 20%. In addition, I'm an aesthetic dentist. These towers are butt-ass ugly. If you have ever seen one disguised as a tree, they look nothing like a tree, and they are best laughable. All these issues are important and need due diligence, but especially the negative valuation in real estate. I humbly ask this board to protect my property values as well as those of my neighbors and ensure the public is participating in the decision-making process transparently. This is the country. There's plenty of other areas. Look for an alternative, least intrusive means. I ask for you to deny the variances as well as the project itself. And by the way, I am a T-Mobile subscriber with no problems with cellular service. Thank you.
Thank you, Wallace.
Frank.
Yes. So thank you for letting me go up there and give some comments. I don't think I'm saying anything new to my neighbors. We're in strong opposition of it. We get away from the health pieces of it, evolution, the Environmental Health Trust website, I brought a letter in with a QR code to kind of stay up with technology. But for the most part, I think I speak for my neighbors as well, is that, or echo what my neighbors are saying, is that it's just the, we moved out to Wilton with the acceptance of that we want to get away from the city. We want to get away, to some extent, from the technology that's in the neighborhood. And I can say that as 12 years of being a mobile employee of my company at my home, that I've survived just fine. My cellular connection is fine. There are some areas on Taverner where we see it, but putting this tower there is something that, long after I'm gone, is still there, and whatever it's doing to the environment, again, I'm going to digress and stay away from that. But I'm in strong opposition of it, and again, I echo what Gilbert and Fritz said as well. And again, it's even proven in the Environmental Health Trust. When I moved out here, I had to fill out a document that basically said I observed that there was no cell towers out here, away from the radiation levels that already come from the ground in the Wilton, which is much higher than Sacramento. So again, I'm in strong opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tao.
Good afternoon, board. I'm a little nervous, so I just want to strongly say that I oppose the tower and my neighbor...
Tao, would you do me a favor to stand between those two microphones? There you go.
Thank you. I strongly oppose the tower and all of the reason my neighbors and Dan represented that. I just, I want to plead that if you were in my situation, would you please oppose that and deny the tower? Currently, I'm reading, I want to add one more, that France, Belgium, and Germany, they are banning the iPhone 12, and they just smoke like this due to the radiation. So if we have a 90 or whatever, 100-foot tower, it will give us a lot of radiation. So again, please deny that. And I've been living in Wilton for a while, so, over a decade, so please think for my, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beverly.
Do we have a phone comment on this?
Currently, right now, I believe we have one to two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Posain. I have lived in the Wilton area for 53 years, and I value the land and the community. Now let me just start with the idea that this is about one tower. It is not about one tower. This is about proposing at least four more towers in the Wilton area, and this is just the one that gets it started. Because this is 5G, and even though I was given this letter three days before the first hearing, it didn't say in the letter anything about frequencies or that was 5G. And 5G won't work unless you're within five to six miles from the next tower. And they want this tower to go all the way down to Highway 99. So this is just the first little tipping point. I know on Gerber Road, they went ahead and they already had a tower, so they put the 5G on that. Now in 2019, T-Mobile went to head-to-head with San Francisco because their towers were so ugly and they lost. And so San Francisco was able to keep some of T-Mobile out of there because it was so ugly. But that's not the main concern here. There's other concerns, like there should be protective local zoning. Some of these laws were brought up in 2021. When we came for the first time over this hearing, someone sat over here to counsel the chairpeople, and he didn't know the law, and he didn't know the truth, and it wasn't true that you can't say anything against health. In fact, two years ago, there was a huge win for the children's health defense against the D.C. court because the FCC ignored the evidence of health problems. So, and we know that also in San Francisco, the Sutro Tower, which went up in 1972 to 88, has shown within a five-mile radius, 300 cancer victims of different kinds, even brain cancer and leukemia especially for children, which really isn't normal. We're seeing it more now, but that's because of all the pollution. We also have fiber optics coming soon to our area, which would, they argue about streaming. They argue about, oh, we have to make a 911 call. Guess what? You can make a 911 call even with T-Mobile in that area. I went to the El Grove, since they send everyone in the mail and on TV, hey, we're coming.
Can you wrap up, please?
T-Mobile, we're here, like we have no choice in the matter. We can get a phone call. And so there's a law, a government code, saying as long as they can make a phone call, it's not legal for them to say we have to put up a tower. And we can make a phone call, according to El Grove and T-Mobile themselves.
Thank you, Beverly. Thank you.
Jose.
My name is Jose Delgado, and I've been sworn in. First of all, just a couple of observations. I saw some of their slides that they put up there. I live across the street over a couple of houses. What they're depicting is not true. Some of those pictures, aerials, might have been off other maps before when the trees were in good condition. A lot of those trees are old and dying, and some of them, they've been knocking them down as we could speak. I have T-Mobile. I live not far from there. All I did was I bought a new telephone, I mean, for the wife and I. My phone works great. I got no issue with it. So I was saying I need one across the street that doesn't fly. The existing county codes and regulations have successfully established Wilton as a very desirable location within the country. We are asking you to uphold the current codes and regulations to preserve and protect our rural atmosphere and deny the multiple variances being requested. So please, help us out on this situation because we love where we're at. We'd hate to see it go down. The one picture they showed, the palm tree from a driveway, that picture's set back. So it looks like the palm tree is almost the same size as the pine tree. It's not. It wouldn't be. If you saw what actually 90 feet looks like, you know it wasn't theirs. They made it look like that. If you're going to stay at 55, keep at 55. Don't let them raise it up any higher. Thank you for your...
Thank you, Jose. And we're good now, we'll go to our phone, public comment.
Yeah. If you could transfer the first caller? Hi, caller. Before you start your comment, I will need to swear you in.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board, is the truth so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I affirm.
Okay, and then please state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn," and then start with your comments.
Okay.
And you can start now.
Yeah, hi. I'm Daniel Spear, and I've been sworn in. I live in Wilton and on, near Taverner and Shorthorn, and I can affirm that our coverage with not only T-Mobile but other carriers is extremely poor in our area. And we very much support the building of this tower and your affirmative vote for the negative declaration and the approval of this, of this project. It is a necessary thing in our modern times. We've been living in Wilton now for, I don't know, 35 years or something, before even cellular phones were available. And the reality is, we can't live without these kind of modern conveniences anymore. The expectation is you have an Internet connection, all that kind of stuff. Well, frontier in our area is very poor. T-Mobile, this tower will offer wireless Internet service, which would be fabulous. Other options are limited, and just want to let you know that we very much support this tower. Some of the environmental arguments that you've heard, well, you, as you know, you have to follow the FTC regulations, and those regulations state that it's safe. And if you deny this one, what about all the other cell towers in the county? Are you going to die of those as well? The reality is, we do need this thing. Our cellphone coverage is extremely poor in my area, and I can affirm that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes your public comments.
Okay, thank you, and we'll turn to Supervisor, Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank staff because I think that they approached this applicant in a very business-friendly manner, which is something, obviously, we're working on to try and be that nimble, responsive, easy place to do business, and so I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that, given that this is in the heart of District 5, I was on the front lines of receiving calls about this item, and so when I approached staff after I learned that it would be $4,300 to appeal, the Planning Commission decision, they were able to walk through the process, and I thank Mr. Merchant for being here and giving us the background of what happened at the CPAC meetings in order to bring this appeal forward, because I think that that did work as intended so that the community can be heard. And in addition to that, I appreciate the comments regarding different options that Mr. Merchant mentioned as far as height of towers in order to offer a greater breadth, you know, so that maybe they don't have to be sighted within such proximity of one another, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that that points out something that might be a worthwhile exercise, is how do we apply cell tower design criteria to the rural area so that we can get out in front of this a little bit, maybe? Because I've been dealing with this issue as an El Grove City Council member for years, but obviously, that's primarily in a more urban setting. but obviously, that's primarily in a more urban setting, with houses much more dense and much more infrastructure on which to place micro antennas, et cetera. I did want to answer my colleague Supervisor Serna's question regarding the one PC abstention. That was my appointed planning commissioner, who, because of what staff had said as far as the litany of reasons that you cannot find to deny a cell tower, he didn't want to vote for it, because he heard the criticisms from the community, but he felt he couldn't vote against it, and so therefore, he issued an abstention. And so before I get into the bulk of my comments, let me just say that I am in no way anti-cell tower. And in fact, as we, was mentioned by one of the callers, as we get into the world of the Internet of Things, where obviously, we have phones, we have computers, we have televisions that need broadband, but also our cars, our refrigerators, our vacuum cleaners, I mean, we are getting into more and more items that require some sort of connectivity. And particularly in District 5, in the rural area, all the way down into the Delta, we are working diligently to try and improve broadband access and improve consumer opportunity to achieve that connectivity. That being said, there were three different entitlements being requested as a part of this application. The use permit, a special development permit, and design review. The use permit, I don't think we can deny. That's been established clearly, that there are standards, and as long as they meet those standards, that meets that. Design review, I think, is what we need to maybe get in front of a little bit, and tighten up, and make sure we all have an understanding of what we do or don't find acceptable. But that third entitlement absolutely is discretionary. Special development permit, where they are seeking to exceed our own county standards almost by double, going from 55 feet tall to 90 feet tall. That is a variance, that is a discretionary approval. And then, because of that height, it will require a 270-foot setback, which they literally, physically cannot achieve on this parcel. They can get from one-third of the requirement up to two-thirds of the requirement. But even if they were to place it on one of the property lines, they would not be able to get that setback from the opposing property line. And so, for those reasons, I don't think that we must allow this tower to go forward in this location. There has been considerable community opposition because of the height variance, which doesn't allow for the setback. And so therefore, I would make a motion to uphold the CPAC's appeal of this project and deny the Planning Commission recommendation.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume. And a second from Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my line of questioning is probably best directed to the T-Mobile representatives. I think most of the objection in principle to these types of poorly disguised towers, quite frankly, is that it almost draws more attention than if you didn't disguise it, because it's, you know, you're trying to imitate nature. And at least from what I've been able to discern, seeing these towers scattered across the community, we still have a long way to go in terms of being able to mimic trees as, you know, as these cell towers. So what can you share with us in terms of kind of the latest technology, in terms of the, you know, addressing the aesthetics, so that, quite frankly, it's not laughable?
My name is Bill Lewis. I have been sworn, representing the applicant. Thank you for that question. So the type of design that we're proposing is a faux pine tree. Historically, these types of towers have been built as what's referred to as a steel monopole, just a bare pole with antennas on it. Over the years, we've worked with tower manufacturers to come up with different types of designs to imitate trees, windmills, other types of trees that we can deploy. Some of them, I don't think would be consistent with the environment here, such as, say, a palm tree. We can design it as a eucalyptus or an elm tree. But in terms of the types of faux trees, I would say the pine tree is going to be the most appealing or pleasing visually, especially in this environment, because there are mature pine trees that are surrounding the facility, I believe. Some are, we mentioned, up to 56 or 60 feet. I do want to make a comment, if it's okay, in terms of the height maximum of 55 feet that Councilmember Hume referred to. Part of the county's code is to promote co-location, and the ability for multiple carriers to locate on one specific tower, so that it eliminates the proliferation of towers throughout the community. When we design these towers as, say, a faux tree, we need to make sure that there's branching above the tower, so that it has a natural tapering. If we limit towers to, say, 55 feet, that means that the top of the tower is going to end at 50 feet. Antennas below that are going to be at 40, 45 feet. And then, the next carrier below that's going to be at 35 feet. Carrier below that's going to be at 25 feet, which really is not going to accommodate the coverage that is needed by one or more carriers. So in looking at the height of these towers, it is, a 55-foot-tall height maximum is not going to be sufficient for one carrier, let alone multiple carriers.
Then, while you're at the podium, if it's the will of the board to affirm the motion that's on the table now with the second, what would your next course of action be in terms of trying to fill this purported gap in service?
We, and we did provide an alternative site analysis. We looked at, I believe, eight total properties. Majority of the properties were either lack of interest, did not show interest. There was another property that was interested, but it was outside of the search ring and did not cover the coverage objective that the radio frequency engineer requested. I think at this point, there is no other potential site. And so if the Board of Supervisors decided to deny this project, it would be denying wireless coverage within this community, because this truly is the least impactful facility within the community.
How do you address some of the testimony of subscribers to your cell service that claim that they have adequate service?
Part of the presentation that we did, we wanted to try and get as granular as we could, and actually put it into context within this community. I think the maps that were shown, there were three carriers that were shown by the community. There's three carriers that were shown, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and T-Mobile. We have to not look at the AT&amp;T and Verizon coverage, because federal law states that it's specific to the carrier that's applying. So looking at it from a T-Mobile perspective, the maps that are shown are sales maps that were taken on the website. And you're looking at a broad area, and it's not really drawn in, it doesn't provide a lot of data that's needed at a smaller region. The website that's online does not give you all that granular data. We did provide the data that is required, that shows the specific area. Not only did we show a lack of coverage, but we also showed how many users or people within the community would be affected by it. And it was roughly 3,000 potential users that would have increased coverage. We also showed that within the area, there is about 250-ish E911 calls that happened within a 30-day period. And so, one, it would increase the coverage capabilities, and we've established that there is a lack in the area, and it would also increase potential E911 services within the community.
In terms of the map discrepancy, the web map versus the other map that you showed during your presentation, as an undergrad in geography and someone who spent considerable time studying cartography, I'll let you know that your web map does you a great disservice when it comes to this type of situation. And to claim that it's not accurate because of the specificity or the scale of it, I could understand if you didn't have things like roadways at scale, but you do on that map. And so it's a little disingenuous to say, well, it's not at an accurate scale for one thing, but it is for another. And so that's, you know, something that you may want to, besides what action we might take today, you might want to take back to HQ and say, you know, this is causing, you know, your mission and in your profession, a bit of a headache, because anyone can pull this up, apparently, and confront you with it, as they have done. So I would encourage you to figure out a way to try and rectify that.
I appreciate that comment. One thing that it's also difficult to establish with the maps, there's two objectives when we put up a cell tower. One is coverage of the area, and the other is capacity. In a day and age where we are on our phones much more, streaming, Facebook, YouTube, it creates a huge amount of need for data. That also means that there needs to be more towers to service that area. So, you know, this is a situation, there are times where we present and areas that are much more dense that might have coverage, and it's really more of a capacity issue, where we're trying to offload capacity from one site to another site, so that you don't get those logged jams or decreased download speeds, or in the event of an emergency or natural disaster, you are able to actually make a phone call, because it's not cluttered. In this situation, this community, it's, they actually need both. They need coverage, and they also need capacity. There was one caller that called in and spoke and stated that there is no coverage, that they truly do need coverage. One of the community members today actually said, along Taverner Road, when they drive, there is a lack of coverage. He kind of briefly went over that. But there is a significant need within this community for not only coverage, but capacity for the T-Mobile network.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. So I tend to give a great deal of deference to the supervisor representing the district on these types of issues. So, Mr. Hume, I'm going to disappoint you today. Because I do think that, first of all, you know, the paramount, and I'm very familiar with the Wilton area, having had many family members live in Wilton. But, you know, we're at a place in our history, you know, as a society, where this type of technology is ubiquitous and necessary for public safety, for just the way that we, you know, get by on our day-to-day lives. And so the question that I put before myself is, would I, you know, vote for this if it was proposed in my neighborhood, in my street, next to my house? And I would. I agree with Supervisor Serna's assertion that some of them have been comical over the years, being that I actually did write the ordinance for the city of Sacramento for co-location back in the day, back in the 90s. And we saw it coming then. It's here. It's going to be here. And I think that we all have to recognize that these are utilities that are, you know, essential to our everyday life. So for that reason, Supervisor, I do support placing this pole where it's been proposed.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Hume?
Yeah, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to say, following the applicant's comments there, and I appreciate the comments from Supervisor Serna, because I think the one depiction on the map represents a sales tool, and the other depiction on the map represents a lobbying tool, and they don't coincide. But I think it's specious to say that this is the only parcel within a certain area that you could find a willing lessor. And the other thing is, if you listen to what these folks are saying about living in the rural area, and I know that I did say earlier that I am working to try to improve broadband access, and if your pole were at 55 feet high, I probably would have no leg to stand on. But what the people who live in the rural area need is to make sure that they have enough gas in their car, or a good enough charge, to get where they want to go the next day. They need to make sure they double-check their grocery list before they leave the house, because it's a long way to the store. They need to make sure that their fences are strong, so that their animals don't get out, okay? It's a whole different kind of lifestyle out there. And so to think we're just going to drop in urban-style infrastructure, no matter how cleverly it's tried to be disguised, into the rural area is presumptuous. And so, you know, I think that my community has spoken about this, and I can appreciate my colleague from District 2, his lack of deference on the issue, but I stand behind my motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Frost?
I'll be brief also, but I just want to say that I'm sensitive to the comments brought forward by the community. I think if I lived in that community, I would have many, or even maybe all of those same concerns that have been expressed. And I think when the community speaks so loudly, I think we, as representatives, should listen. And so I'm supporting Supervisor Hume's motion to uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, so I'll start with my comments, thanking, you know, staff. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the conversation today. It's some really great points. I appreciate Supervisor Serna's point, because, you know, on the one hand, on your website, you put up great marketing material that tries, you know, that would encourage people to sign up for your service by convincing them that the service is great, the connectivity, the connection, the coverage is just great in that area. But then you come here to us today and said that service is not that great, and this map is not granular. I mean, I've heard from a lot of granular people today about, I think you get more granular than that, when you hear from people in the actual community. And I, so I did have a question, and I don't know if this is staff or the applicant. You mentioned the E911 calls, and that's something, you know, obviously, emergency response is something that's really important. Do we know, either anecdotally or otherwise, that the coverage in that community has compromised emergency response, either from police or fire? Do we not, Jessica?
We, as staff, do not know that. Sorry. Over here, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. Our planning director.
Hi, this is Bill Lewis, representing the applicant. You know, I don't know specifically with the fire and what areas you can't make a phone call, but I know that, I spoke at the CPAC community. There was one or two points on my phone that it said SOS, which means I could not make a call. So, and that was along a major highway, or a major throwaway to get to the meeting. I was relying on, you know, my phone to navigate there, and fortunately, it already loaded the data before I got there, but when I was trying to leave, it had difficulties loading it for me to leave. So I know that there is compromised coverage within that area.
Okay. And I didn't, you know, I didn't see that mentioned or addressed in the staff report, because to me, that's a very compelling thing. Because then I start thinking about Supervisor Hume's comments, and, you know, I was sitting up here thinking about, you know, there are some trade-offs in life by living in a rural community. And I think Supervisor Hume did a great job articulating those. I mean, to me, this is not the same as an environmental justice community, where they've suffered from generational lack of resources for their standard of living that we should be working to provide for them. I'm just, I'm not convinced that this is necessary in that area. I mean, I do know that there would be revenue to T-Mobile in leasing out space on the antenna. I also know that, based on Jessica's comments, that you'd be able to go above the 90 feet with an actual antenna. So it could go up to, I think, 20 feet, up to possibly 20 feet, even higher than that, with an antenna. So I'm convinced by the community today, and I'll be supporting the motion. So with that, no further comments, just please vote.
Okay, and the motion carries with Supervisor Kennedy reporting a no vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody here, for the discussion. Appreciate it. Okay. So that'll take us to item 49. So that'll take us to item 49, correct?
And as that's coming up, I just want to say that Supervisor Hume must have a very expensive vacuum cleaner.
I would make a comment about my wife, but that would be sexist, and I would make a comment about my house cleaner, but that would probably be, I don't know, bougie.
Supervisor Frost, yes.
Yes, Chair Desmond, I, I have to leave at 3:30, so I wanted to stay as long as possible. I don't know if it's possible for me to register a yes vote on these items before they're presented. I hate to miss them, but.
No, but I appreciate, I appreciate your letting us know and yes, you will be missed for the presentations of these two items in your district.
Thank you.
Okay, 49.
Okay, so for item 49, this is the residences of Marietta Hills East, a one-year time extension for a vesting tentative subdivision map known as residences of Marietta Hills East, dividing approximately 86.2 acres into 99 residential lots, four open space lots, one sewer lift station lot, one lot, and one private road lot for a property located at 6307 Stonehouse Road in the Casumnas Community. And the environmental document is an addendum to environmental impact report.
Thank you. And Emma, before you get started Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. In light of Supervisor Frost's comments about wanting to vote but having to leave in five minutes, I'm just wondering as a point of order, could we forego the staff reports and give her the opportunity to do so while she's here?
Do we have any public comment on item 49?
We do have at least one public comment in person for item 49.
Okay, Emma, is that, I'll look to my colleagues.
It seems like a fairly perfunctory.
It does, it does. So let's, let's take the public comment very quickly. Can you make it?
Yeah.
Can you make your, abbreviate your public comment? Okay, all right.
I'm in a position with which I am familiar. CPAC approved this, planning people approved it. My one comment was to ask for help from, from staff as this goes forward. This is a 2006 Board of Supervisor approval with numerous extensions. This is now 60 conditions of approval on probably both of these, east and west, the next item as well. And I want to make sure that the mitigation money that was dictated into what are now obsolete areas of these 2006 reports carry over efficiently to what now has superseded them. One in particular, there's, there's an intersection of Stonehouse where this project is located and Highway 16 that calls for mitigation money to be allocated to improving that intersection. We now know that intersection cannot be done per Caltrans, and we have designed and staff is aware of one that goes around it and meets a traffic light, already approved, that will intersect at where the Marietta Equestrian Center is. There's a couple of other ones in there, but I just want to make sure that the initial mitigation money from 18 years ago goes where we need it the most. This particular intersection is key to our emergency evacuation plan. So with that, I have no objection at all to moving forward with the project, but I just need some help from those folks if we can get it.
Thank you, John. And I, and I know that's also our planning director, do you have a comment?
I do. I just wanted to confirm for Mr. Merchant, Todd Smith, planning director, those same conditions of approval and mitigation measures carry forward with the maps should the board choose to approve the extensions? And obviously, we're going to be working closely with Department of Transportation as future design of that intersection improvement shapes up. Obviously, there's been some preliminary work as Mr. Merchant has mentioned, but his concerns are noted.
Thank you. And Mr. Merchant, can I assume that those are your comments for both items 49 and 50? Okay, then why don't we?
And those are specific to the emergency evacuation plan that we're working on, those, the light that he specifically pointed out is necessary for it, so it's important.
So I'm, I'm okay bypassing staff report unless my colleagues prefer otherwise on item 49 and would entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, and Madam Clerk?
unanimous vote.
Can you read item 50 into the record?
Item 50 is the residences of Marietta Hills West, a one-year time extension for a vesting tentative subdivision map known as residences of Marietta Hills West, dividing approximately 59.9 acres into 99 residential lots, four open space lots, one landscape lot, one television tower lot, and one private road lot for a property located at 6307 Stonehouse Road in the Casumnas Community. The environmental document is an addendum to the environmental impact report.
Okay, thank you. And so staff, unless there is some important distinction, I see our planning director shaking his head. Any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, and Mr. Merchant's comments are in the record.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
We did it.
You got one minute.
Right. Now we need two-thirds on the next two items, so.
Thank you all, and thank you, John, for being here, for your comments.
Okay, for item 51, this is a long title and I have shortened it as much as I can, legally can. For item 51, this is the resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property for Fair Oaks Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Mobility Project. The first property is Sierra Oaks Real Estate LLC, a California limited liability company located at 2280 Fair Oaks Boulevard, APN 294014046. The second property has several property owners or interests, James B. Hanson and Betsy A. Hanson as trustees of the James B. and Betsy A. Hanson Living Trust, Edwin V. Russo and Bonnie Jean Russo as trustees of the Russo Revocable Trust, Bonnie J. Vale as trustees of the Bonnie J. Vale Trust, Melvin C. Vale and Diane R. Vale as trustees of the Vale Family Trust, Joanne Wilson as trustees of the Wilson Credit Trust, Jess V. Hanson and Niss P. Hanson as trustees of the JV Hanson Surviving Spouses Trust, UTD, and Niss P. Hanson as trustee of the Joan M. Hanson GST Taxable Marital Deduction Trust, UTD, and Niss P. Hanson as trustees of the Joan M. Hanson GST Exempt Marital Deduction Trust, UTD, for property located at 2410 Fair Oaks Boulevard, APN 294014013. And for property three, staff will be asking you to drop that, but that I will read into the record is 2550 FOB LLC, a California limited liability company located at 2550 Fair Oaks Boulevard, APN 2940180006. Environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good job, Madam Clerk. I think you missed one.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, one parenthetical reference. Could you start over? Peter, good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, program manager with the acquisition section of our real estate division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends approval for three resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Fair Oaks Boulevard Bicycle and Pedestrian Mobility Project. As Florence has alluded to, before I begin my presentation, there has been a very recent development regarding resolution number three for 2550 Fair Oaks Boulevard LLC, a California limited liability company, and 2500 Fair Oaks Boulevard, APN 2940180006. The owner has provided the necessary signed acquisition documents to the real estate division, and the county has fully executed those necessary documents. Therefore, I would ask that the board drop the resolution number three again for 2550 Fair Oaks Boulevard, a California limited liability company. Thank you. The purpose of the project is to improve bicycle and pedestrian mobility on Fair Oaks Boulevard between Monroe Street and Howe Avenue. A vicinity map showing the project limits is attached, attachment one. Within the project limits, Fair Oaks Boulevard currently serves as a six-lane thoroughfare with a two-way, two-lane frontage street on each side from University Avenue to Fulton Avenue. The frontage roads will remain in their existing capacity as two-way streets after this project. The Fair Oaks Boulevard Complete Streets Master Plan creates a complete street vision for this section of Fair Oaks Boulevard from Howe to Monroe. And is designed to incorporate contracts to improve pedestrian, bicycle, public transit, and motorist mobility. Of the five necessary acquisitions for this project, two properties are the subject of this board's item. At this time, I'd like to display attachment three to this raw hearing. This is the list of properties. Each of the individual properties shown on the attachment here, thank you, shown on the attachment here, as you can see, are described in square feet. Again, number one, Sierra Real Estate, Sierra Oaks Real Estate LLC, a California limited liability company. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Number two, the Hanson property at all. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of just a temporary construction easement across a portion of the property. And then number three, which we have dismissed. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the various easement interests I just mentioned and that are displayed on attachment three. The county's negotiations with the remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary easements in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolution of necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet along with owner contact histories. Notice of intention to seek approval of the resolution of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard mail at least 15 days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any properties in question, I or other project team members present here in the audience are available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments on the phone or in person.
And Peter, the Hanson, the property, I mean, with all those different owners, can you?
Yes, I can expand a little bit on that. We have reached general conditions of agreement with the owners as there are 11 parties on. Our agreement has a counterparts provision where they're allowed to sign in counterparts. Thus far, the county and the real estate division has received six of the 11 owners' signatures. So as we compile those going forward, you know, we will put those together and finalize that agreement. But in general, when I come to the board today, you know, we have to have a fully executed agreement in order to either drop like we did with the previous property.
Right.
So to say we're at hard impasse, I think is a little bit of an overstatement for that particular property. So we're well on our way to coming to agreement, it's just the logistics of getting.
Right, part of that delay is the logistics. It's not, it's not the, you know, difficulties trying to strike a deal.
Correct, thank you.
And Steve, I see you up there from DOT. I won't put you on the spot about some creative ideas for our art in public places at this location on the Y there, right? Well, you know what I'm talking about. Okay, all right, sorry. Okay. All right, so no public comment. I don't see any supervisors in the queue. I will move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and then can we take a separate vote to drop project number three?
Oh, yes, I should have incorporated that into my motion. So move, drop, drop item three.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, 52.
Okay, item 52 is a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent, or I'm sorry, an amendment of an eminent domain action for the Watt Avenue Complete Streets Project to acquire real property easements and interests from Safe Federal Credit Union, a federal corporation located at 4636 Watt Avenue, APN 2400084019. The environmental document is a revised negative declaration.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So this, this resolution concerning just one property, Safe Federal Credit Union, is to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Watt Avenue Complete Streets Project. The purpose of the project is to modify Watt Avenue from the westbound I-80 off-ramp to Roseville Road and provide complete streets improvements such as buffered five-foot-wide class-two bike lanes, raised medians, vertical curb and gutter, and landscaped separated sidewalks. The project also includes signal modifications at the following intersections, Watt Avenue and Orange Grove Avenue, Watt Avenue and Winona Way, and finally Watt Avenue at Myrtle Avenue. Of the 33 necessary acquisitions for, required for this project, this one property is the subject of this board's item. At the moment, I'd like to take a moment to display attachment three here, which is the list of properties again. Each of the individual property necessities are listed on the corresponding sheet there and are shown in square feet again. So the real property, Safe Federal Credit Union, a federal corporation located at 3636 Watt Avenue, assessors parcel number 2400084019. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public roadway and public utilities, an easement for public utilities and public facilities, and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Again, the county obtained an appraisal for the affected property from an independent appraiser and presented the offer to the property owner for the purchase of various easements interests I just mentioned and that are displayed on attachment three. The county's negotiations with this owner have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary property rights in the subject property under the current circumstances. Today's resolution of necessity and anticipated eminent domain action will provide for possession of the real, of the required real property interest and construct, and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Again, information to support the required statutory resolution of necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet along with owner contact histories. Intention to seek approval of the resolution of necessity was mailed to the respective property owner again by registered and standard mail at least 15 days before this proceeding. If you have any questions on the project, I or any of the staff members here from SACDOT are present to answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any public comment or comment?
We do not have any public comments.
And Peter, were you at impasse under the original plan, under the easement? Because it sounds like the revised plan, the easement's.
Yes, that is. That is correct. So as a result, when we first written, wrote the offer to the owner, the engineering was a little bit different. So we presented that offer and there was some initial negotiation and, you know, discussion about the property. The owner provided their own third-party appraisal based upon that engineering. It was a significant impact, so the county decided to do some re-engineering to reduce the take areas. And thus, the county council opined that when we first sought a resolution of necessity last fall, that it was sufficiently different enough to necessitate another resolution of necessity coming back. Correct. And we are still at impasse on.
On the valuation.
On valuation, yes.
Okay. Well, I will move approval of the resolution of necessity.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you, board.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, our last item, item 53.
All right, item 53 is the presentation of conceptual design for monument and historic interpretive signage for the Freeport Delta Gateway Monuments Phase One Project.
Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Steve White, Chief of Engineering and Design with the Department of Transportation. We'll end on a happy item today, I think. So today, we're here to provide a brief presentation of the conceptual design for the Freeport Delta Gateway Monuments Project. This effort was funded through a grant from the Sacramento San Joaquin Delta Conservancy, and in accordance with the grant requirements, the Department of Transportation facilitated three community workshops in the Freeport area, which informed the conceptual plan. These workshops were conducted earlier this year between March and June. The conceptual plan was developed through this public process and it was presented to the Delta Protection Committee on July 20th, so this is a bit of a rerun for Supervisor Hume, but it was well-received at that, by the commission. The grant also requires us to present the conceptual plan to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, which is what brings us here today. The public process and the design effort were led by Henry Yasui, Senior Landscape Supervisor. The public process and the design effort were led by Henry Yasui, Senior Landscape Architect with the Department of Transportation. At this time, I'd like to ask Henry to come forward to briefly present the conceptual plan.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Steve. Chair Desmond, members of the board. Thank you. I'm here to present the conceptual design for the Freeport Gateway Monument and Interpretive Sign. That was where we reached consensus with the community on a final design to proceed with. And if, we'll go ahead and proceed to the next slide, please.
You can do the slides yourself.
Oh, yes. Can you tell us my first time here? For some context, I'd like you to refer to the map on our PowerPoint presentation here. Basically, the Gateway Monuments, there are two, which we propose to locate on the northern end of Freeport, the town of Freeport, right there at the corner of Freeport Boulevard and Casumnas River Boulevard. The interpretive sign we're proposing to place along the side of Freeport Boulevard in the middle of town, close to the proposed future city of Sacramento Park that's planned there. That will be part of the Delta Shores subdivision that's out there at the moment. As Steve mentioned, we participated in three community meetings, and the first one, our goal was really to introduce the project and try and establish some goals on what the people out there would like to see with incorporating into the Gateway Monuments and the Interpretive Sign. And some of the goals that we established were basically, it was important to the participants that we promote Freeport as the historic northern gateway to the delta, recognize Freeport as the, one of the last legs of the National Memorial Victory Highway that runs from New York all the way to San Francisco, and also preserve and protect local heritage, local, the local heritage for the, for the area, and also convey Freeport's role in California history, particularly the Gold Rush. And if you'll notice in some of the images there, the existing Freeport Bridge plays a large, large part in the identity of that, of that town, and was an important element they thought should be incorporated and introduced as part of the interpretive sign and gateway Also part of the first meeting, we presented several examples of other gateway monuments and interpretive signs. There were certain elements that they keyed into, and there were a lot more examples than what's presented here, but some of the items they were really interested in were the, as illustrated in image one, there's the medallion, custom medallions that were done for the Fair Oaks Boulevard project. They were interested in having something similar to that incorporated onto the gateway monuments. They also, moving to image two, they were, they liked the, kind of the old-style font and text, and how the, the lettering was presented on the old Florentine project. They also liked the, the windmill. And then for the other, there's images three and five, which represented the material Corten steel, which they were interested in somehow incorporating into the design as well. And then image four was simply an example of some of the color variation they'd like to see, and colored concrete somehow incorporated into the design. After we had completed that first meeting, we took those ideas and presented about six different design options, and the one that they really enjoyed, or really liked to see was the so-called bridge concept, which for obvious reasons, you'll see. But the gateway concept, the gateway monument concept here that there was consensus on basically is, incorporates the, a couple of elements. Up top is the, a representation of the bridge, Freeport Bridge, including the color that's, that's out there. That would be supported by a Corten steel beam or support. And below that is the representation of the old steamboat paddle wheel that basically would be a reminder of what, what historically used to pass through the Sacramento River there, past Freeport. And then at the bottom would be the base, basically a colored concrete base that would incorporate some of the railroad tie and the railroad elements that are a big part of the Freeport history as well. Oh, as well, I should point out, too, there was, off to the right there, there's a emblem, a monument, or, excuse me, a medallion image, which they were interested in getting a sort of custom logo done for Freeport, similar to what was done on Old Florentine. But on the, on the supports themselves would be lettering that would identify as you come into, into the town there, and the elevation that you see is, is the image as you come into town. But on the supports would be the, the letters, "Gateway to the Delta" as well as "Victory Highway." And of course, up top would be the historic Freeport. When it came to the interpretive signs, we took a similar approach with showing the community different examples of interpretive signs. And the type of setup that we recommended was going with a laminated, high-pressure, laminated type of sign, and double-post supports. The sign itself, we're proposing to do a 24 by 36 board, and the concept here was basically to do a timeline, pretty straightforward, but we wanted to make sure we represented, or showed a lot of the different historic times and milestones for the local community, including how Freeport got its name, when it was established, the role of Chinese laborers in the construction of both the railroad and the levee, river levee, construction of the bridge itself, and then the designation of the Victory Highway that Freeport's a part of. So those are the general concepts that we reached consensus on with the community. They were very supportive and enthusiastic about the results and us, us working with them directly in our presentations. And we'll be, in the next phases here, working further to refine the interpretive sign and the gateway monuments in this project as part of this Phase One. And I'll let, I'll turn it over to Steve to talk about what the other steps are remaining in this project.
Thank you, Henry.
Thanks, Henry. Just to wrap up here, so to finish up this first grant, we're working with PERS right now for Sequel Analysis. Once we have Sequel Clearance, that really completes our work under the initial grant. With Sequel Clearance in hand, we will go back to the Conservancy for additional funding for right-of-way acquisition and construction phase as well. So there's no formal action today that we're asking the board for. This is really just an informational item, and as I said earlier, a requirement of the grant for us to make it. So at this point, we're happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that the board may have.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm afraid my colleagues might issue a petition for recall if I go on too long here and make this meeting too long, but I do want to mention two, two things. First is, especially from you, my esteemed colleague from District Two, I still think the, the railroad spike floating out in the middle of the sky looks weird on the, on the logo, so I just want to reiterate my concerns over that. And then the second one is on the interpretive signs, on this one that's up on the screen right now, I think we should find a color font that stands out on all of the photographs and stick with it, because the one up in the top left is a little hard to read, and it just looks a little odd to me. That's it. Thank you.
Both comments noted. Thank you.
Supervisor Ternok.
I just wonder why we don't want to incorporate something to the effect of, "This is where your regional wastewater discharge occurs."
We had a presentation on interpretive signage, and now Supervisor Hume will entertain us with some interpretive dance. Okay. Our county, our county exec.
No comments today. Thank you so much.
Okay. Comments from my colleagues, Supervisor Ternok.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I hope I'm not going to steal some of your thunder, as in Thunderbirds, but just wanted to go on record and thank Darcy Brewer, our Executive Director of the California Capital Air Show, and her Board of Directors, and all of the volunteers, all of our sheriff deputies that were out at the 17th Annual Air Show this past weekend. I know a number of us had an opportunity to be out there. Just a fantastic job. Saw Mr. DeFonte out there and others of our staff, and it really was something to behold, and it seems to get better each year. And as I redid the other day with a constituent who had some issues with noise and what he called, you know, going to watch military toys perform, I reminded him, too, that they raised thousands of dollars in scholarships that go to deserving students, not just in Sacramento County, by the way, but across the region, to help them advance their STEM opportunities. So kudos to everyone, including our airport system, too, who made, plays a very major role in that, in making this a great event. And then, speaking of events, because we will not meet as a board until after the fact, I just want to remind everyone in the public that Aftershock is coming up, and in Discovery Park, on October 5th through the 8th, and this promises to be yet another great rock festival, and will feature the likes of Guns N' Roses, and one of my personal favorites, The Cult, on October 5th. So I'll be going to see that, and I know I'll see some of my colleagues and some of, some of the executive team, I'm looking at you, Mr. Jones, out there rocking out, and so we look forward to that, and another successful concert event out there. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention, not in a formal closing in memory, but the South County lost two pretty important figures here recently. The first is Ron Coleman, who was a former fire chief down in Southern California, who was also heavily involved with CAL FIRE, and, and his wife very involved with the Regional Scholarship Foundation. And the other one was Melba Mosher, who, her family traces back to the Spanish land grant days, Count Valencien, as well as the Barton family that at one point ran cattle in what is now South Lake Tahoe. And her husband, Bill, was honored by the Mexican consulate for positive farm labor practices. And so Melba Mosher was, I think, 96 years old and passed away, and she lived a great life, so.
Well, thank you for that, Supervisor Hume, and I just want to just echo some of the comments of Supervisor Ternok about the air show. It was really awesome, and I'm very proud of our, our county airport staff, who were out there and did a lot to help with the California Capital Air Show staff and volunteers. So that was a, a great time, and I think they had really, really great attendances here as well.
And I'm also very proud of our chair, who managed not to lose his lunch, as he did a couple loop-de-loops with.
I almost did. It was not good. I was not feeling good when I saw you on Sunday. But, okay, and with that, we are adjourned.